I call this meeting of the Conroe Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. As the record show, that a quorum of members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code Chapter 551, time is 6:01. Those who would like to join us, I'm going to turn some time over for our invocation to trustee Dayton Williams, followed by a pledge of allegiance by trustee Teresa Wagman.
Thank you, Mr. President. If you so choose, please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for another unpromised day. Thank you for allowing this board to be of service to our community. Father, we ask on this day, and for the remainder of our days, for wisdom and grace. In keeping, let us have a heart of forgiveness and a spirit that is slow to anger. As we close out another phenomenal school year, we give you the glory, and we petition you for your continuous blessings on our teachers and administrators who fight the good fight daily. Let them be encouraged by their service to you in answering their calling to be educators of your children. Grant them endurance and patience in a seemingly thankless profession. Lastly, let us decrease in self so that you may increase in us. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And the Texas flag?
I am a Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, one state, under God, one indivisible.
May be seated. Thank you, Mr. Williams, Ms. Wagman. Moving on to item 2A is our special Olympics Powerlifting State Champion Recognition. Dr. Noel, what a great event.
Well, you can hear in the room the sound of champions walking in as you hear those medals clanking. And this is a fine bunch, they are fired up. I even, a few of them even showed me their muscles out there. And the numbers are incredible. So, let's start off this celebration by asking Dr. Kendra Wiggins, our Director of Special Education, to come forward and tell us about our Conroe Stars.
All right. Well, good evening, President Hubert, members of the board, and Dr. Noel. This is one of my favorite times of the year that we get to celebrate our athletes. A little history about the Conroe Stars is, they actually, the first year that was established in Conroe was 1969, which is the first year that the Special Olympics were in Texas. So, we are one of the oldest groups in the state of having this. We have 250 athletes on 29 campuses, and they compete in over 10 competitions both locally and at state level. All of them compete in bowling, individual skills for basketball, track and field, and once they're in high school, they're in bungee bowl and powerlifting. And we're getting ready to add table tennis for the next two weeks for that. So, tonight, we're honoring 17 athletes that qualified for state in the powerlifting. The Winter Games were held February 17 through 19 at B Cave, Texas. But before we introduce the athletes, I want to thank all of our administrators, our Fed administrators, we have Lauren here who oversees, according to the oversee them. All of our teachers and paraprofessionals that work with them. And then, one of our biggest shout-outs is going to be to our coaches. So, I want to introduce them. All right. So, Gwen Spears, is Gwen here? Come up. Make your way up, Bob Peterson, Alicia Jenkins, Brian Inman. And then, our fearless leader, David Kite is here. So, among this group, they have over 100 years of teaching experience. So, these are like some serious educators in the room. So, I'm going to turn it over to David, the leader of our group, to introduce our athletes.
Again, like Dr. Wiggins says, thank you, Dr. Noel, thank you, board members, especially every single administrator in this building. I've probably met you at least once or twice in my 31 years. But anyway, and we are old. But, on to why we are here. We had some amazing athletes lifting lots of weight back in February in B Cave, Texas, on Lake Travis. Here we go, you ready? Abigail, you ready? Abigail Walker from the Woodlands High School Trails. Come on up, Abigail. Ms. Katie Chapman, Grand Oaks High School Trails. Hey, Tanguma! Katy Creek High School Trails. And some dynamite right here in Bianca, Perez, Grand Oaks High School Trails. Jordan Barlow, Oak Ridge High School Trails. And I admit when I'm wrong, sorry Reese, I love you Reese. Reese Adams, come on up! Woodlands High School. Conroe High School, Trails, Alexis Giorado. Grand Oaks Life Skills, Mr. George Champion. Oak Ridge High School, Life Skills, Mr. Drew Chapper, come on down, buddy. Also from Oak Ridge High School, Mr. Logan Leonardo. Collins Park High School Trails, Mr. Rafael Aramfo. Nick Breeden from Katy Creek High School Trails. Good job, Nick. Also from Katy Creek High School, Mr. Cody Kane. And from the Conroe High School, Mr. Angel Cortana. One more time for all these athletes, let's go!
Hey, guys. I am an elated enthused at the energy you guys have, and I really, really, really appreciate how well you guys do such an arduous task. What most athletes, and I try to convince or educate Mr. Hubert all the time, will understand that the weight room is one of the most dreadful places to go. And you guys just excel at it and make it look easy. So, I want to appreciate you guys for putting in the work and getting it done, and always, you know, being ready and prepared to, you know, put forth the additional effort to be the best of the best, and this is what this represents, the best of the best. So, thank you, guys. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen.
We're going to get in line. Everybody follow Dr. Wiggins. Everybody follow Dr. Wiggins. Everybody scoot forward, everybody scoot forward, and we're going to follow Dr. Wiggins. You got the hat, you're the leader.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Well done. Congratulations. Awesome job. Congratulations. So proud of you. Congratulations. 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 Well done.
Thank you.
So proud of you. Congratulations. Really well done. Thank you. Awesome job. Congratulations! Really well done. Congratulations!
We're going to do a group picture outside. And Mr. Stewart's going to take a group picture of the kids outside. Parents, you're welcome to go out with them if you can. We'll just give just a second to allow everybody to move around. I might start taking David Kite around with me just to introduce me. That's right.
It's a great hype man.
I know. You get that if you're a champion. I know, that's true. I don't have any medals, so.
You have no medals.
Yeah. Maybe, yeah, that could work.
All right, while everybody's shuffling, and we'll go ahead and move to our next item, which is our citizen participation. Ms. Godfrey, do you have an idea how many? I know we have signed up, how many do we have tonight?
Twenty-eight registered.
Twenty-eight registered, very good, okay. So, during this portion of the meeting, patrons who have signed up in advance may address the board in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code Chapter 551, and Board Policy BED. For comments regarding an issue on tonight's posted agenda, the board will defer its discussion on the issue until an item is reached on the agenda. For comments related to an issue that is not on the board's posted agenda, the board cannot deliberate or make a decision related to that issue. We ask that speakers address their comments to the board and not to the audience. If any speaker's comments are regarding a complaint, the board directs you to its policy regarding complaints, which can be found on the district's website. Please be aware that if your purpose in addressing the board is to seek remedy for your complaint, the board cannot discuss or respond to your concern until you have met the requirements in the appropriate district policy. Each speaker will be given two minutes to present their comments to the board. Screens around the room will display the speaker's time. When the countdown timer reaches zero, the next speaker will be called. Ms. Godfrey, will you please call our first person?
Bernita Quarter.
Good evening, school board, Dr. Noel, and community members. My name is Bernita Quarter, and I'm proud to say I've taught in CISC for 30 years. I have taught second, third, resource, and now life skills. For years, I supervised at recess and never thought much about playgrounds. When I became a life skills teacher, I began to notice that our playground is not accessible to students with mobility issues. There's a concrete sidewalk and a ramp leading to the playground. However, the playground is covered in wood chips. Students in wheelchairs and rolling walkers are not able to access the playground. Additionally, students with balance issues have difficulty walking across the playground to access the equipment. The second issue is that if they could access the playground area, they cannot access the equipment. There are steps and no ramps. So, why care about playgrounds? Playgrounds are the meeting place of elementary school students. It is where the social, emotional learning is put into action by children. When you play with someone, you get to practice the skills you are learning. We know that students with disabilities are two to three more times likely to be bullied than a general education student. When people know you, they are more likely to understand you and take up for you. We know that peer intervention helps tremendously with stopping unkind behavior, and in the worst case, bullying. I want my students to be able to interact on a level playing field with all students. When they leave me to move on to other schools through the friendships they develop while playing, they will have a group of friends that know them and take up for them.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Morrison. Elizabeth Morrison. Courtney McNell.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to briefly address, let me put that. I'm short, okay. Good evening. I'm here tonight to briefly address the book issue and hopefully give everyone some insight on what is actually going on in the schools. Ask any of your junior high or high school kids, and a majority aren't reading books. They are looking at these. All of this wasted energy on books to think you're protecting them from the real world is ignorant. I have worked in public education for almost 20 years in multiple districts, and both of my kids are in public school. Unless you have physically been in the trenches working in public education, you have no idea what we are dealing with, and each year it gets worse. Here's a few examples of what my son has been exposed to since starting school. He had a student threaten to bring a knife to school and kill his whole first grade class. That student told my son that he would cut his face off if he told anyone. The school did a phenomenal job handling that situation. Fast forward now to fifth grade. I mentioned the erect penis video a couple months ago. Now, here's another one for you. My son came home and said that a student in his class was listening to a weird song on a Chromebook. The student was logged into their personal music account and was listening to a song called "Three Big Balls." Think a very graphic homosexual orgy porn set to rap music. Take notice in both of these instances, it didn't involve books. These are not isolated instances, they go on in all schools every day all across the nation. Being a parent and educator in CISC, I think we should be focusing more on the discipline and safety issues. Here's the problem. Public education is already underfunded in Texas. The current budget doesn't even allow for us to keep up with the growth of the student population in CISC. Trying to find funds for bulletproof glass and metal detectors isn't feasible for the near future. Arming teachers definitely isn't the answer. You don't trust us to educate your kids, but you trust us with guns? Spanking is outdated, and good luck getting people to buy into that in this day and age. So, I would like you to consider this. We made it through school without phones, so why don't we make it a rule that there are no phones allowed during the school day, and actually enforce it at the secondary level? That way, kids can't meet up with other kids to buy drugs in the bathroom, text their parents in the middle of class, or post on social media. Thank you.
Rachel Walker.
Good evening, board, President Hubert, Dr. Noel. Also short, but. I try my best to find the good in seemingly bleak situations, and I find it helpful, though difficult lately, to remember that people often have good intentions. However, their actions can be misguided, and they end up doing more harm than good. So, keeping in mind, those behind these seemingly endless false narratives about porn in our libraries are just coming from a place of wanting to help kids, because that's what it is about, yes, helping kids, I've come up with a list of ways they can actually help kids within CISC. I would like to read them and draw inspiration as you see fit. Step one, fill out the volunteer application on the CISC website. It takes less than a minute. Step two, make a list of Title I schools within CISC. Step three, choose from the following options. Contact the cafeteria manager and pay off some of the outstanding lunch balances. Ask the school counselor if they have a list of families that need assistance during the holidays. They do. And call on your circle of friends and people in your neighborhood to supply the list of needs the counselor gives you. Join the PTO. Seriously, please, join the PTO. We will welcome you with open arms and immediately assign you a job. Email any elementary school teacher and ask them if you can purchase some items from their classroom wish list. Donate to the fundraiser of a Title I school. Those funds will be put to good use. Bottom line, find a need and decide to be the one that fills it. With the amount of people that fill this room as of lately, I expect going forward, there will be no more empty slots when the signup genius goes out. Thank you.
Elaine McClure.
My name is Elaine McClure. I'm the mother of two Conroe ISD students and two future Conroe ISD students. Our school district has about 71,000 enrolled students and about 10,000 employees. Conroe ISD is preparing a bond package which will be on the ballot this November. Current estimates of the total bond value are between $1.6 and $2 billion. Based on what I'm hearing, only $25 to $50 million of that is recommended to be allocated towards safety and security. That means that the bond, as is being discussed, would allocate a total of somewhere between $20 and $25,000 for each student and employee of our district. Of that, only about $300 to $600 per person would be allocated to each person's safety. That is unacceptable. This bond is looking to allocate $20 to $25,000 per person, and only 2% to 3% of that money would be going towards increasing the safety of our students and school employees. The safety and security of our children and their educators and all of the other staff of Conroe ISD is worth more than 2% to 3% of a possible $2 billion bond. We have 81 police officers spread out among 67 campuses on our school district. This number includes some police officers that split their time between multiple campuses. We need armed security at each and every one of our campuses, full-time during operating hours. Common sense, as well as recent events, have told us that the schools that have this figured out are less vulnerable to an attack. I have heard that our school district intends to hire additional security for all campuses in our district, and it is my hope and expectation that Conroe ISD will follow through with this plan. One quick and easy and budget-friendly step that could be implemented to increase security at our schools is the removal of the "gun-free zone" signs that are outside of our campuses. These signs do nothing to prevent illegal activity and instead advertise to the public that the people inside these buildings cannot defend themselves. Gun-free zone signs instantly make a campus a soft target. Instead, we need to show the community that the safety and security of our students and employees is something we are willing to protect.
Thank you.
Alyssa Hart. Alyssa Hart. Mr. Kaiser canceled his sign up. Amber Sullivan.
I spoke in February about educators feeling that Montgomery County is turning into an "I gotcha" community. Last month, a speech was read from a parent who admittedly took a book from a high school library. The parent entered the school without any heads up to the librarian, and during school hours, a time when staff should be focused on serving the students. In a year where TEA is checking security and safety as an agenda item in this meeting, it seems like such an abuse of power for a parent to show up whenever they want and demand to go to the library. The front office did call to check with the librarian before sending her back, but in this culture, which librarian would feel they have the power to say no? They certainly would be thrown to the mama wolves for what would be perceived as hiding things. This parent knew they were concerned about a particular title, yet they checked out the book and did not mention any concerns to the librarian. They did not alert an administrator on our campus. They did not even casually mention it to the secretary on their way out. Instead, she stated that she took it straight to board member, Mrs. Odenweller. She bypassed every person in the school and brought the book to a board member. That seems highly suspicious. Pictures of the book, including the school's barcode, were posted online in numerous CISC parent sites. How did they get there? If Mrs. Odenweller was given the book, then did she take the photos and share them? Or did she give the book to people that would? Either way, it seems like an extreme sabotage to the very district and employees she is supposed to be representing, and I think the board should look into that a bit more. Odenweller and the parent used the book as an "I gotcha" and never even gave the librarian a chance. Had they had spoken their concerns with the librarian, she would have told them that for the past three years, she's been battling breast cancer. Between chemo, radiation, and six surgeries, her final one just a couple weeks ago, she would have gladly reviewed the book, knowing that a slip might have happened in her vetting process while she was busy just trying to stay alive. But she never got that chance, and instead was blasted all over social media and in a board meeting.
Andrew Lozano. Whitney Skidmore.
Hello, I'm Whitney Skidmore, a freshman at Grand Oaks High School, and I'm here to discuss the student viewpoint, my student viewpoint on the book ban. It isn't wise to be banning books the way we do when they contain many important issues. Helps us as youth to expand our viewpoints, which is important in a world with such differing opinions, even if they have sensitive topics such as racism, sexism, abuse, rape, sex, and even the rights of the LGBTQ community. It is important we educate ourselves and are aware of these things in the world, especially since these topics are very common in our society. I myself and my parents have decided on my own boundaries to what my mind will ingest when it comes to literary works. While also, I may agree, some books aren't the wisest to have access to youth in libraries such as The Court of Mist and Fury and Court of Thrones and Roses by Sarah J. Maas because they do contain graphic depictions of sexual encounters. There are times when there are exemptions deserved in the novel Handmaid's Tale. It also shows sexual encounters, both a caveat to it portraying an aspect of society overplayed in a dystopian world and the effects it could have in society. There are other books which have sexual scenes and are accused of glorifying these relationships. This is not the case. Many of the relationships these books are being taken off of the shelves happen in our school. These books are not glorifying these situations. This is the situation with the previously challenged book, Perks of Being a Wallflower. More like, shows us the darkness and truth to the world, and pulling these books from curriculum and libraries won't change the fact of the social situations. Language is another reason many books are being taken from the shelves, saying the books are extremely vulgar, and I won't deny that is also, can possibly be true. No matter what, though, these children will be hearing these words in attending school and in more excess. Another trend in books that are being banned contain LGBTQ characters. Once again, I agree, sex in many books is.
Thank you.
Sierra J. Cox.
Hello, I am Sierra J. Cox. I have lived in the CISC school district for 10 years, and I have two kids currently enrolled in schools and two more on the way. First off, I wanted to start by expressing the gratitude for the amazing teachers and staff that have taught and supported my children thus far through their educational experience. Our school district is full of talented and dedicated individuals, and I appreciate all that they do. I am here today to express my concern about banning books in our schools. While I understand that some people may have reservations about certain materials, I believe that it's important to allow for diverse perspectives and ideas in our educational system. As Texans, we cherish individual liberty and the right to make decisions for our own families. Every parent or caregiver has the right to decide what is appropriate for their own children, to monitor what their children read. They do not have the right to decide that for other families. I've heard arguments that books that have been brought into question are not age-appropriate, and I disagree. In fact, these books are written specifically for young readers and offer valuable insights into important issues. Age-appropriate and "I approve" are not synonyms. Age-appropriate and "I approve" are not synonyms. You may not approve of the ideas held in a book, but that does not equate it to it not being age-appropriate. We do not have a constitutional right to be free from discomfort or opposing ideas. I ask the school board to consider these things as they make decisions about the books in our schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Jim Baylor, and I'm a parent of a seventh grader at York Junior High. I want to talk about the violence problem at York and Conroe ISD in general. First, I appreciate the steps the board has recently taken to address the violence problem at York. I applaud the extra staff working to keep peace in the halls and the lunchroom, and the appointment of a new, more experienced principal at York. That's a good start, but I hope the board is committed to a sustained, meaningful effort to curb violence at all Conroe ISD schools. I hope the board realizes the direct connection between lack of appropriate student discipline and student violence. The main problem is not that the established Conroe ISD code of discipline is inadequate. The main problem is that this code is not being adequately applied. Unacceptable student behavior is being tolerated way too often. Teachers are discouraged against giving referrals. Suspensions for egregious behaviors, for example, the recent gun threat at York, are too short, they're the wrong kind, or they're not given at all. One-sided attacks are intentionally mislabeled mutual combat. I wonder why? I hear it makes metrics look better. The student discipline problem at York is causing other problems. Bad actor students from York are now causing problems at Grand Oaks High School. And York has a serious problem with keeping experienced teachers and getting substitute teachers to come back. In closing, I urge the Conroe ISD board to act responsibly to address the serious student discipline problem in our schools. Thank you.
Hello, I'm grateful to be up here to be able to talk to you about diversity. So I'm a diversity professional, been doing it for 20 years. And, you know, as an African-American male from the city of the west side of Chicago, I've dealt with many situations where diversity became a problem. And so one of these issues unfortunately came to light here. The logo for Ms. Odenweller is a Bible with the cross that has flames around it. I reached out to Ms. Odenweller and told her that that's akin to the cross, the burning cross. And as an African-American, or really any minority, that's a challenge to see. And unfortunately, instead of having empathy, it was more so trying to justify why the logo was used. I mean, that's akin to telling somebody that's Jewish that a swastika is just a plus sign with a few extra lines. There needs to be extra sensitivities. Sensitivities regardless if the intent was there. I'm not a person that gets offended easily. My job is, as a diversity professional, is to educate those of us that may not understand the insensitivities that are out there. And so as leaders for the school, especially for a district that is very diverse, you've got 60% of the student population are minority. 28% of the student population are from disadvantaged communities. And so from that perspective, if you have a lack of sensitivity, it could really lead the efforts in terms of them not having the really audacity to speak up. And so my job as a parent for two kids that are in this school district, which I love mightily, is to increase the awareness of diversity. So please, I recommend that you immediately change the logo and so that we can set an example for those around us.
Board members, Dr. Knoll. I am the parent of a second grader, and tonight, everyone is talking about the harm that a book might do to our children. I am here to ask you to address a far more urgent threat to our kids and a complete lack of respect for our parental rights. District policy, your policy, allows school staff to restrain students for almost any reason without ever telling parents. Grown adults with no safety training can grab our kids, press their bodies against them, pin them, and keep it a secret from us. This policy shows a gross disregard of parental rights. In cases where restraint is necessary, parents have a right to know so they can address the problem with their child. In cases where it is not, parents have a right to know so they can hold school officials accountable. But surely, you think, school staff members are trained professionals and know how and when to restrain a child? No, even untrained staff members can restrain any child so long as they undergo training within 30 school days after the fact. That means everyone gets one dangerous freebie at least, maybe with your kid, and the district policy says that we as parents don't really need to know that. So if you crow about harmed kids when a teacher reaches for a book, you can't look the other way when a school employee manhandles a child. We only found out our child was restrained because he had a big scratch on his arm, and we found security camera footage that showed a grown man picking up our kid, dropping him, and dragging him around, all because he began to walk away when the teacher was talking to him. Your policies assure the adult in the situation that the kid's mom and dad probably won't ever find out what he did, and it's the child that grown-ups in authority can hurt him or her and take physical control of their body without ever having to answer to anyone. Every day you let this policy stand, you're teaching our kids more about grooming than a book ever could. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is April Prim. I am a resident of the Woodlands, and I am a parent of a student attending a CISD Title I elementary school. First of all, I want to say that I am really excited to be here. I am relatively active at my daughter's school, but having an elementary school-age student means that coming to things like this, a good drive away overlapping with after-school activities, dinnertime, bath time, potentially even bedtime, is a really tough thing to pull off. But I am here, and I'm here because I am worried enough to be here. And I hope to be a squeaky wheel for all of the parents that can't make it to speak for themselves, and I know that there are so very many out there in a district just because of ours, some of who I know that are even watching tonight. But I wanted to speak on the agenda item of legal because I saw that you have a very important decision to make about a book a little later tonight. But I didn't ask to come up here because I wanted to speak about this book. I asked to speak about accountability for encouraging an endless parade of challenges here while sitting in this room and when we go out into the world. Why are we not making it more clear that these challenges take much-needed money away from the district in the form of legal fees? We have to fight all of them. And further, the vitriol regarding these challenges pushes quality teachers away from our district. I ask all of you, please, to keep fighting for the education of all the children in the district, but to ensure that there is a functioning district at the end of the day, if not for your children or grandchildren, then for mine and the other parents who love CISD. Thank you.
Hello, board, Dr. Knoll. Glad to be here, well, kinda. My phone just messed up. My name is Anne Marie Kennedy. I am the mom of an adult who graduated from Conroe ISD, and I will have one or two grandchildren in Conroe ISD this fall. I'm very appreciative of our professionally educated and experienced and talented teachers, librarians, and other staff. I'd like to address school cultures and how social-emotional learning helps combat and prevent bullying. Culture in schools, just like workplaces, have the tone set by those in leadership. The Conroe ISD Board of Trustees is a prime position to do this in setting the tone for students, faculty, and staff. I've read significant research about social-emotional learning, and it shows that modeling, teaching, empathy, just as one example, simply caring about another person and understanding what it's like to be in another person's shoes matters in preventing and reducing bullying. We could use this to lead all of us on how to be kind and to be kind to people who aren't like ourselves, are of a different race, have a different religion, speak a different language, or are LGBTQ, have less money, have physical characteristics which are noticeable as some of the most common reasons of bullied children in school. With social-emotional learning, our teachers, staff, coaches, et cetera, can teach children who witness bullying to stand up to bullying as an upstander, to confront the bully, and to do it with confidence, and not be a bystander taking video of the bullying or a fight. I believe that the Conroe ISD school board sets that climate, and we need to do better, and y'all means all.
Dear CISD trustees and leadership, this is a testimony that I gave at Austin, and I wish to repeat it here. I wish to speak about the faith and belief of the religion of atheism, which is being propagated in our classrooms at CISD under the guise of science. Our founding fathers in the Declaration of Independence said, "All men are created equal," and our Creator has blessed them with rights which cannot be denied. To most, the life and universe around us is evidence of a Creator God. However, the religion of atheism has the faith that science someday will have the answer to the universe and life around us. The Big Bang Theory, the origin of life through chemical and physical processes, which are the founding faith that our beliefs of the religion of atheism are currently being taught in our science classrooms. Hence, in our TEACs and subsequent curriculum material are promoting the religion of atheism in our science classrooms while suppressing the religion of creationism. This is a violation of a student's constitutional right. Since CISD has been restructuring the TEACs, I urge CISD, just like I urged SBA, to correct this violation by moving the teaching of these faiths and belief of the science of atheism to our social study courses under the religion of world religions, which are founded on three underlying philosophical schools of thought: monotheism, monism, and atheism. The Big Bang Theory and the origin of life through the chemical and physical processes on the origin of the universe and the life around us must be covered by TEACs and curriculum under the religion of atheism. Then, of course, once you have life, you have to, you know, the teachers how life evolved, the whole natural selection, evolution by natural selection, which is the science of racism, should also be included there. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Enough of the smack talk and grenades tossed. Our teachers and support cannot be lost. Thanks to the board, admin, faculty, and staff, you work hard each day on all students' behalf. I trust these teachers with my own. I trust the patience and care they've shown. I trust their training, years it span. I trust their knowledge to lesson plan. I trust the staff to grow my kids' minds. I trust them to teach them to be kind. I want my kids to learn about diversity. I want them to be ready for life's adversity. Reading books offer a safe way to experience real challenges in the world today. We learn to have empathy, we learn to cope, we learn to try hard, and to have hope. We learn it before we experience it, we prepare our minds on how to deal with it. Librarians earned a master's degree. They studied, they worked, it didn't come free. They need no input from untrained prodders. They need not yield to religious fodder. I want more good teachers, counselors, and librarians. Our world needs more caring humanitarians. I won't arm them with your guns, I only want to give them more fun. I wholeheartedly know the staff care for your kids and mine. We can pay them back with our support because we could never pay them back for their time.
Erica Lewis.
Hi there. I don't have a fancy speech written or a great poem that's hard to follow. I just came up here with an honest heart after I was compelled to come speak tonight for the moment due to the violence that was shown on the local news last night at the Woodlands High School of a person being bullied for a year and a half and then being beaten in front of the vice principal and a police officer. My family, I just want to tell our story, experienced bullying a few years ago upon our return from an international assignment. We moved back to the Woodlands to our cozy home to discover that the three years we had been away, the peers of my two daughters that are here in the district had grown in very different directions, and we experienced bullying, intimidation, exclusion to a great degree. We called and spoke to students, the counselors and the principals, and we were advised to move neighborhoods. Let me say that again, we were advised to move neighborhoods. We talked to the parents in our neighborhood. The culture in our neighborhood would not budge, it would not change. There were parents buying alcohol for kids in our neighborhood, and we were advised to move neighborhoods, which we did. We moved to a different neighborhood so that our kids could go to a different high school. And not most families do not have this luxury. This bullying that the kids are getting away with at the Woodlands High School, College Park, Oak Ridge, and all the other schools, it starts in fourth grade, it's severe, and right now there's very little punishment for the bullies. So the good kids leave. We moved here 11 years ago because of the schools. They were tens, the Woodlands High School, Galatas, McCullough. We are moving away this year because of the schools, sevens, sixes. This district has got to get a handle on discipline. The bullies get away with it, and they know it, and the good kids leave. You have got to make changes.
Thank you, appreciate you.
Hello, my name is Georgiana Lewis, and I go to Oak Ridge High School. As a queer student, I am concerned about the censorship I am seeing in my very own school against books that contain important representation of the LGBTQ community. As a minority, it is of grave importance that kids who are part of the LGBTQ community see themselves represented in literature and media. Removing books like Ramona Blue from school libraries limits students from seeing themselves represented equally in our world. No one should take that away from us. We should not be made to feel outcast, like we don't belong, or like we are the only ones who are questioning our sexuality. Additionally, Texas is one of a handful of states in the US that doesn't have a mandatory sex education program, meaning children at our school do not necessarily know about sex, nevertheless same-sex relations or masturbation. Because of this, topics like sexual assault are not talked about or acknowledged. This censorship is dangerous. You are instilling ignorance in our student body. Your ban of books that contains open and honest discussion of these sensitive topics leaves children to explore these ideas on their own with no guidance, leading to an increase in sexual assault pregnancies and STIs as seen before the introduction of sex education and research. By banning books that discuss these topics and explore them without judgment, you are taking us back to an era of censorship. taking us back to an era of censorship not seen in generations. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a high school English teacher, Nicole Gilley, and I'm glad to have the opportunity to speak tonight after administering the STAR test all day, giving tutorials after, and grading before the meeting. You're going to be discussing Ramona Blue tonight. I would like to encourage you to keep the committee's decision of keeping it in circulation at high schools. It is being argued that this book is utterly without redeeming social value. I urge you to stand by the committee's decision that it does have redeeming social value. Paraphrasing the committee, it deals with pregnancy out of wedlock, keeping the baby, parent abandonment, and going to college when you lack the financial needs. These are all things our students have to deal with, and taking away books with these issues will take away their visibility. Board members, I urge you to keep this in mind as you make your decision tonight, and beg you to see past the few lines spoken out of context, and give our students a chance to be visible in the books that they have access to. Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody after you will have to mess with that.
Thank you for your service and your time, as always. Please consider the following three statements and contemplate what you think they have in common. One, the most effective sex education is abstinence-only. Two, corporal punishment is the most effective form of student discipline. And three, library books with sexual content cause destructive behavior. The commonality between these three is that none of them have sufficient evidence to warrant acceptance. Regarding sex education, studies have shown how abstinence-only programs are ineffective at preventing sex or curbing risky sexual behavior. Even our state education code does not mandate an abstinence-only approach, I'm sure you'll hear more about that code tonight, it merely favors it. And according to a 2017 American study, more than 93% of parents place high importance on sex education in a school. Regarding corporal punishment, scientific evidence clearly demonstrates that hitting children with or without a paddle is ineffective for correcting behavior. The American Academy of Pediatrics states that such punishment has potentially deleterious side effects. It's a quote. Lastly, regarding library books, I've yet to find or be directed toward a single peer-reviewed study causally linking library books to destructive student behavior. The closest I've found is a 2020 Taiwanese study linking exposure of sexually explicit adult material to children and later risky sexual behavior, but the study excludes school library books. Whether sex education, disciplined books, or another topic, please don't accept a claim on the simple basis of personal incredulity, or personal testimony, or vague appeals to common sense or community values. You don't even have to trust what I am saying, you can look all this up. Before any of us act, before we rob resources from students and teachers, we must consider the consequences of being wrong, and ask for and evaluate the evidence. We can't expect our children to think critically if we don't think critically first. Thank you, and please vote for the bond.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and Dr. Knoll. My name is Amy Butler, and I have two children in Conroe ISD. First, I want to thank CISD and the Board for supporting kids in the Destination Imagination Program, DI, from the regional level through global finals, which is in Kansas City next month. DI is a creative-based problem-solving program that requires teamwork and builds lifelong skills. It means the world to these kids, who work for months on their projects, to know that CISD will support them and send them all the way to the international competition. So, thank you. Now, on to everyone's favorite topic, books, specifically the book Ramona Blue that is on the agenda tonight. I thought the book committee had a thoughtful discussion about the book. They stated that there was no explicit description of sex, and that the book was not obscene. Just because one person does not like the topic of a book does not give that person the right to restrict access to and censor that book for the rest of the community. Kids deserve to see themselves and their situations portrayed in books. They can see that others are going through similar situations to themselves. For example, some of the themes in the book, like poverty, family life, teenage pregnancy, and sexual orientation, are issues in the lives of many students in CISD. Books offer kids a safe way to learn about the world and how to cope with potential real-life problems. Please uphold the book committee's recommendation and do not ban this book. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carolyn Nene.
Can you get some help for you?
Yeah, down a little bit, because he's tall. Good evening. Mr. Hubert, I had an opportunity to hear your speech before the Senate Committee hearing on education, and you reported to the committee that 55 books had been removed from the Conroe schools. I acquired a list of those 55 books, which I have provided copies for y'all and I have highlighted. In my research, I found 11 of those books continue to be in the Grand Oaks Library, books that were reported to be removed. I found hardback books, and I also found audiobooks for these particular books that are still in the school. I am requesting the Board to research into why these books remained in Grand Oaks. Grand Oaks is the only school I investigated, so there's no telling how many books remain in other high schools. It's certainly enough for me to question exactly what is going on. So, Mr. Hubert, I am sorry to say that your statement to the Senate Committee was not exactly truthful. I'm going to send you an email so that it'll be convenient for you to respond back to me, but I would like to know why the statement was made and why these books remain in our schools. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Louis Padraza.
Hello, how are you doing?
Howdy.
My name is Louis Padraza, and thank you for letting me come and speak to you guys. So, I also, I did a, I just did a quick search three or four days ago. I took 18 books, and I consider this progressively vulgar, or the other definition, which is lax educational suitability, is very gray, right? So, who knows, that can be different for everybody. But I do think they're vulgar, except maybe two books are not, but they're more about drug use and other things. But still, I think, what I, I guess what I want to know, or I guess my point is, I don't think we know the extent of the issue in the schools. Okay? I think there are so many books, and there are so many ways to count these things, that how do we know what books are really in the system? Besides, I mean, you can look them up individually, but that takes forever. So, I really think we need, and nobody really knows what the analysis of the data is, because we don't know what the, what the results are, we don't know how many. How many fives or fours are in the system? Does anybody know that? They don't. So, I am going to do an information request or work with Ms. Heiser to try to at least narrow that down and get some idea, but I think before we say that, oh, books aren't an issue, well, what is the issue? I mean, how many books do we have? So, and the other point, I think, is, you know, you can look at it the internet and get worse views of the world by looking at that, but books in the schools give the allure that it's okay. It's a standard that says, yes, it's okay to do all these things. And 14, 15, 18-year-olds, it's completely different than a 21- or 23-year-old. I had to wait till college to learn all this stuff, okay? I didn't learn it in school, and I think that made me a better person. Thank you.
Audrey Warner.
Tonight, you have on the agenda a Level III hearing for the book Ramona Blue. The rating of this book clearly indicates it is minor restricted. There is content warning that the material in this book is of an adult nature and could even be illegal for a minor to view. In this same rating, you are provided with a summary that includes the contents of sexual activity, nudity, profanity, alcohol and drug use, alternate sexualities, and inflammatory racial commentary. The rating provides you with a list of vulgar language, words such as ass, bitch, dick, dyke, fuck, piss, shit. That's just lovely language, isn't it? Let's say this wasn't convincing enough. There's the Penal Code, 43.24. It's the law, and it's clear that the content of this magnitude has no business in the possession of a minor. The Education Code, 28.004, clearly states, and as a Board of Trustees, you are required to follow, present abstinence from sexual activity as the preferred choice of behavior. Devote more attention to abstinence than any other behavior. Emphasize that abstinence used consistently and correctly is the only method that is 100% effective in preventing pregnancy, STDs, HIV, and AIDS. There is emotional trauma that comes along with adolescent sexual activity, and we know as adults they can't see what might happen, what it would feel like once they've given away probably the most precious possession they will ever have. Leaving this book and a multitude of others anywhere near our children makes you derelict in your duties. As any adult would say, everybody's doing it, or you know they're going to have sex. That's a...
Lynda Long.
And I didn't bring, I didn't bring one of those notes this time, I'm sorry about that, she asked me about that. Okay. When I, so I'm just getting, I haven't been home for a couple, three days, so I wrote stuff on here. So, here's what I'm, what I was going to write and say. After seeing and hearing the number, the age, and the position of the many who seem to be adamant about having pornography books available to our children, it caused me to wonder if any have ever considered the consequence or the end result of such. That is what caused me to think, when I was here last month, you probably tried to forget me, but I'm still here, caused me to think of my life as a student, as a junior in high school. And when I went to the bank to order, get some money for our annual the next year, and I left the bank, and I got a call from the president, said, "Could you come and apply for a job?" Well, hey, yeah, thank you, I will do that. You know, I got that job, I found out later, it's because of the character of my father. They said, "Was that Tholife Havelin's daughter?" Yes, it was. Well, if that's the case, she would be a good worker at a bank. I got my job on the character of my father. I'd been blessed abundantly for that all my life, actually, I'm very blessed to this very day. I'd ask everyone to think, you know how I talk about thinking, because what you think you are, okay? I've said that several times, you probably got that memorized by now from me, so I've asked, I'd like to ask everyone to think about the final outcome of our actions and of our words. Please raise the bar and set a challenge to our children for decency and self-control. We get so busy, we don't stop to think. It seems like we just do whatever we're told. It's easy to do that. You know, you do this, and I just position, you have to do this, and you do this, and you do this. Think about it. What's the end result of what they're telling me to do? We have to be careful, we have to be wise. I believe we're all mature enough to have figured things out if we just think. I really believe some of you will realize that what you're pushing is not for good, moreover, it is for bad. The relationship between husband and a wife is sacred. I tell that by experience. And it has been turned into a... I'm not done yet. Oh, well, that's a long name, it's going to get me every time.
Thank you.
Melissa Boucher.
Good evening, Board.
I'm sorry, would you mind saying that name one more time? I didn't catch it.
Melissa Boucher.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board, thank you for having me here today. I'm going to try and keep myself composed. I am here about a call I received today about the decision to relocate the PAST program to a new campus. And again, I received this call today, so I'm still very emotional. My student, my son's in the PAST program, it's an autism support program, and they have decided to relocate it to a different campus. They also, the school also decided last fall to take away his primary support teacher from the PAST program. We were given four days' notice. We are now being given less than five weeks' notice that he is going to have to relocate schools, we're going to have to figure out busing and other transportations. For a child with social connection disabilities, that is very critical when you are taking them away from their friends and their support system. We have seen tonight with the STAR students that were here, what happens when you see children as an individual and not a number. And I could say that prior to today, I had never felt like my child was a number in this school district, and I can only say that. I love this school district, I love my school. I have made life decisions, including choosing not to move, buying houses, taking jobs to keep my child at the home campus of this program so he would not be relocated and taken away from his support system. Our school districts are under attack, you have people in Austin who are pushing vouchers and trying to tear apart our school system. Parents like me who use specialized programs, I don't have the privilege to go out and find those resources. Please do not further alienate the parents of our school district and push them away. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for that. That will conclude our public comment section. I know we're due for a recess, but if we can get through item three, three, four, and five, and then maybe take a recess at that time, that's okay?
Okay. Item four is our consent agenda. I haven't heard from anybody to remove anything from our consent.
I'm voting on a motion that the consent agenda should step to a...
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Having none, all those in favor, show by the updicted hand. Opposed by the same sign?
Yeah.
We're good? Okay. Moving on to item five, which is the naming of our principal at Gordon Reed Elementary. I'll turn the time over to Dr. Knoll.
All right, thank you very much. Once again, this is that exciting time of year, and we're going to have an opportunity to get to meet and name a lot of wonderful people tonight, and there's a bit of a theme here that you're going to see, but I'd just like to note, and I'm going to make note of these as we go through, but you're going to see tonight a lot of career educators that have had long careers and long careers in Conroe ISD as well. And so, it's great to see folks that have been with us for so long. And in this first situation, at Gordon Reed, it's an opportunity to bring somebody back to the Conroe ISD family. So, as educators, we give so much of our time and our life to the job, that there are those occasions where we need to stop and give that time back to our families. And last year, we had a very successful principal at BB Rice Elementary that needed to make a decision to give some time back to her family, and so she stepped away from that position as the principal of BB Rice to dedicate more time to her family, and has been very successful in getting things going on the right track in her family, and has decided that it was time to come back to what is her calling, and that is being an educator. And so, we are excited that Melissa Skeba is now wanting to rejoin us here in the Conroe ISD family, and the perfect opportunity, another elementary school in the Conroe High School feeder zone, just as Rice was, and even some of the children from Rice are now assigned to Gordon Reed. So, it's a perfect, a perfect fit. So, I'm very pleased tonight to make the recommendation of Melissa Skeba to be our next principal of Gordon Reed Elementary.
Do we have a motion?
Just some moves.
Have a motion, you have a second?
Okay.
You have a second? All right. Motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, show by the updicted hand. Any opposed by the same sign? Motion carries. Congratulations. Welcome back.
President Hubert, members of the Board, and Dr. Knoll, I couldn't be more excited to rejoin the Conroe ISD family. I've been blessed with the opportunity to serve in previous years as the assistant principal and principal at BB Rice Elementary. I'm so delighted to continue in our Conroe High School feeder at and at Gordon Reed Elementary. I say Conroe ISD family because coming back into the district feels like home. Home to me is where, a place where you feel safe and loved, it's not just a building or a house, but a feeling as well. I want to thank my husband, Sean, and two boys, Ryder and Tyler, for always showing me what true love and support feels like, like home. I want to thank my parents, Phil and Trisha Tansy, for always modeling what strength and compassion feels like, like home. Today, I continue to feel like I'm home in this room. Today, I continue to feel like I'm home in this room. I'm surrounded by the love and support of friends and colleagues who have helped shape the leader that I am today. Thank you, Dr. Winkler, Dr. Medford, and Ms. Garrison, for believing in me enough to call a new campus home. To the staff and students at Annette Gordon Reed, I look forward to continuing to build with you an amazing foundation you have laid for our cove. Thank you for welcoming us home.
Indeed.
Now we move on to item B, which is the name of principal at Clark Intermediate School.
Yes, so we had an opportunity that has come open at Clark, and, and I know that we have Ms. Ardwan here with us tonight, who is our current principal at Clark, is gonna be making the move over to York, and so we congratulate her. And that leaves a, a big void at Clark, she's done an amazing job. And so we, we really wanted to look for somebody that could do the work that Ms. Ardwan's been doing, but, but to help build on that, and to help, you know, work through the entire feeder and build, you know, strength through our intermediate schools, through the junior high, and up to Mr. Bush there at Grand Oaks High School. And we were able to find a man who comes with a giant heart, has been a great educator in both the intermediate level, the junior high level, and now being able to work down to the intermediate level. And maybe most importantly, he's very familiar with the Grand Oaks feeder. He's been serving at Grand Oaks High School as an associate principal, so he is known in the community, respected in the community, understands the high expectations and, and what it takes to be a successful grizzly. And I know that he'll be able to, to be great at Clark as well, so I'd like to recommend Mr. Kenneth Shields to be our next principal at Clark Intermediate.
Do we have a motion? You have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, show by the up lifted hand. Any opposed by the same sign? Motion carries unanimously.
My heart's beating really. Good evening, President Hubert, members of the board, and Dr. Knoll. Over five years ago, I was given the amazing opportunity to join the Grand Oaks feeder zone, and I'm honored and deeply grateful to continue serving this feeder zone as a proud principal of Clark Intermediate. I want to take this time to recognize my family who traveled here from Port Arthur, Texas, to be with me tonight, my mother Sharon, my sister Lindsay, and my brother-in-law Tyrone. Thank you for encouraging me, lifting me up, inspiring me to be the best I can be every day. Without you, I would not be who I am today. I would be remiss if I didn't thank some of the great leaders that have helped to guide me in my career. Dr. Chris Povich, you have been a mentor, a friend, an encourager, and I truly appreciate you. Mr. James Bush, thank you for always pushing me and inspiring me to think outside of the box. You have helped me grow as a leader. Dr. Knoll, Dr. Medford, Dr. Stickler, Mrs. Ardwan, thank you for believing in me, and I'm incredibly humbled for this opportunity. Thank you to my Grand Oaks family, you will always hold a special place in my heart. We have been through a lot together over these past five years, a grand opening, establishing traditions and cultures, a global pandemic, and then a lot of firsts. But I am so blessed to have had the opportunity to work with, learn from, and laugh with some of the most innovative and amazing resilient educators in the field. To my colleagues and friends, the GOHS admin and counseling team, some of them have joined me here tonight. I just wanted to say thank you to them for their words of empowerment, their words of encouragement, and all of the wonderful, wonderful memories. To all of the Grand Oaks family, keep growing, Grizzlies. Now to the Clark Intermediate students, staff, and community, I am so excited about the journey we have in front of us. I'm eager to meet you and learn all about you. I'm really excited to learn which house I will be a part of. Now, I know I have some large shoes to fill. I look forward to continuing the incredible work that has been done by Ms. Lindsay Ardwan and the staff at Clark Intermediate to establish a legacy of academic excellence, strong tradit, strong traditions, and a family-centered culture. We will continue to build on this foundation to create lifelong learners, problem solvers, ready for their future. We will maintain our path towards the cause, the cove cause. We are courageous, we are dreamers, we are givers, we are friends, we are Clark. Thank you.
Very nice.
Ms. Ardwan, I told him the greenhouse was the best one, this, that's mine. Pressure, but
That's awesome. Congratulations. Moving on to item, we've got three more, and we'll do it. Item C, which is name director of elementary education, Dr. Knoll.
Okay. Once again, we have an opportunity to, to see a great educator tonight elevate into a new position. In this day and time, it's pretty rare to see somebody spend twenty-five years plus in one district, but beyond that, twenty years as a principal in Conroe ISD, on multiple levels, elementary, intermediate, and K-six. So certainly all the experience that you could ever want, and, you know, as we started this process of trying to bring in another leader into our elementary education department, the principal's voice was, was heard, and, and they, the chorus sang one name in particular that, that they felt like was a strong candidate to help them grow and learn, and that is Ms. Tara Vandemark. Ms. Vandemark, or Doctor, I'm sorry, let me get that right.
Yeah.
A lot of time and money spent there, Doctor, I, I need to get that right. Dr. Vandemark, once again, has, has led multiple campuses for us, including opening Suchma, done it, just a beautiful job in, in every stop along the way, and we know that she will do that in this new position as well. So I am proud to make the recommendation of Dr. Tara Vandemark as our new director of elementary education.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I have a
You have a motion, you have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the vote, show by the up lifted hand. Any opposed by the same sign? Motion carries. Congratulations.
President, President Hubert, members of the board, and Dr. Knoll, it is my great honor to accept the position of director of elementary education. In my twenty-six years in Conroe ISD, I've served as a teacher, assistant principal and principal, and I've worked with and learned from some of the greatest leaders in education. Now it's my turn to give back to our students, employees, and community. I believe that my job as directors is to support our campus leaders in any way that I can, so that they can focus on the job of educating our students to be future leaders and to continue that cycle and pay it forward. I'm excited for this opportunity, I'll learn and grow alongside the great educators in Conroe ISD. As we tell our students every day, we don't ask you to be perfect, but simply do your very best. I will do the same, with it being known that every decision I make or action I take always comes from a place of love and is always made with the best interest of students in mind. I also want to thank a few people who have helped me along the way. My family's here with me tonight, my husband Brian, my daughter Lily, my son Hunter have been there with me every step of the way. I love you guys very much. My parents have always supported my pursuits, even when it took me from Iowa to a semester in Mexico, or teaching, student teaching in Puerto Rico, or moving to teach in Texas. They are watching from Kansas tonight, this evening, so sorry for all the sleepless nights, and thank you for allowing me the freedom to challenge myself. I love you, Mom and Dad. I'm also thankful to the teachers and administrators who've been role models for my children to develop into the great students that they are today. In fact, my daughter is graduating from Oak Ridge High School next month, and will be going to Texas A&amp;M in the fall to study forensic. I also want to thank you, Dr. Knoll, Dr. Shelley Winkler, Dr. Medford, and Mrs. Garrison, who have been great mentors to me throughout the years, and for always taking time to support me in any way needed, or to just listen. And for all of my principals, students, teachers, and parents who have made this job so much fun and rewarding, even in those tough days where nothing seems to go our way. We find the joy in helping others, and it motivates us to keep going every single day. To my Suchma family, I love each and every one of you. You are always in my heart. David and Cherie Suchma, gonna get it, you are amazing role models, and we always strive to create an environment that you are proud of, and that, to create a legacy of that relationship-building encouragement and support. I cannot wait to start this chapter and see what lies ahead. Thank you so much for this amazing opportunity.
Well done. All right. Exciting. Okay, moving on to item D, which is name executive director of school improvement assessment and accountability.
Yes, sir. Once again, we have an opportunity here to recognize a great educator that has held multiple roles in our school district, elementary principal, junior high principal, teacher, assistant principal, intermediate level, across the gamut. And since he has taken on roles here in the administration building, Jeff Fuller has gone above and beyond to make sure that others are successful. And that's really the essence of this department, right, is to make sure that he builds skills in other people so that they may shine. And it's not about bringing direct attention to the, the office of school improvement, but, but we have seen that, we have seen people grow. We have seen examples tonight, and then other, in, in other months where we have had assistant principals elevating into principals, that is work that is happening through our leadership development programs that, that Mr. Fuller and his team have worked on. As we are hiring assistant principals now, we are seeing our teachers are prepared to be assistant principals because they have been in programs that he has led. During this school year, about halfway through the year, basically, we went to Mr. Fuller and said, we appreciate all the work that you're doing with your current job, we're gonna need to give you another job also to do. And without missing a beat, he just took on that extra role and did both jobs wonderfully, and has certainly earned this opportunity to move into an executive director role to oversee now officially both of the departments that he has been overseeing throughout this year. So I am proud to make the recommendation of executive director of school improvement assessment and accountability of Mr. Jeff Fuller.
Do we have a motion?
I have a
You have a motion and a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? We all know, Mr. Fuller, no discussion. All the motions, all those in favor, show by the up lifted hand. Any opposed by the same sign? Motion carries. Congratulations.
You told me you only had thirty seconds. President Hubert, members of the board, Dr. Knoll, I'm truly honored and grateful for the opportunity to serve as executive director of school improvement assessment and accountability in Conroe. Over the past twenty-eight years, twenty-six of that being here in Conroe, I've worked diligently in various capacities, as teacher, assistant principal, principal, director of school improvement and leadership development, all towards the betterment of our remarkable district. As I stand in front of you today reflecting on my journey, I feel an incredible sense of purpose and passion. As you may know, the self-actualization stage, which is the need for personal growth and self-fulfillment, is one that not too many people achieve, and I'm proud to have attained that at this moment. To be a part of something greater, to contribute towards making our students' experiences worthwhile, has always been my ultimate goal. And through this position, I have the chance to give back to a district that has taught and shaped me over the years. I'm eager to bring my creativity, innovative ideas, friendliness to this role, along with my years of leadership experience, to raise those standards further. My goal is to create an environment where everyone feels valued and empowered, where the pursuit of knowledge and success takes place in a supportive setting. I would like to thank my family, my oldest three are watching on YouTube, they're, they're somewhere in the, in the universe there. And I have two of them here as well, the one that's been running around, Ben, and my stepson Kenny's somewhere back there. My friends, teachers, colleagues, and mentors, in particular, Dr. Tamika Taylor, Dr. Ed Upshaw, and Dr. Shelley Winkler, for their continuous support, wisdom, and encouragement. You know, my success would not have been possible without their love and their guidance. I would also like to thank my wife, Chelsea, for always believing in me and pushing me to the best, being my sounding board, and most importantly, probably being patient with me. And of course, the students I've served over the years, for without them, I wouldn't be standing here today. In closing, I would like to express my heartfelt gratitude to the school board, Dr. Knoll, Dr. Medford, Dr. Hines, for recognizing my potential and giving me this opportunity. I'm excited for this new chapter in my life, and I promise to give my all to make Conroe ISD the best it can be. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and one more before we end this, this item under human resources, is E, which is name director of payroll. I would assume all the teachers are online?
Yeah.
Watching and making sure this one is fulfilled?
All of these jobs are important, but for about ten thousand people, this job might be the most important, because this, this is the one that makes sure that, that the first and fifteenth of those checks actually show up in the, in the bank accounts for all our employees. And, and this is another one of those, I think, a feel-good story. Rachel Jimenez came to Conroe ISD as a payroll specialist, so started in the payroll department. During her now twenty-year tenure in Conroe ISD, she has elevated from payroll specialist to assistant coordinator, to coordinator, to assistant director, and, and stands here tonight to be recommended as the director of payroll. And I think that's a testament to her hard work, her willingness to learn during that time, going back and completing a degree, all of those things. But it's also a testament to the great leadership that we have in our finance office. Becky Davis has been our director of payroll and is the best of the very best. And for years, Mr. Rice and I have talked about what, what will we ever do if she retires?
And, and that had us nervous, to the point to where, but at this point, that department
runs so well because of the work of Becky, but also because of the work that Rachel has done to learn and to grow into the role, that when Becky came to, to talk to me about retiring, she said, that department is my baby, but I know that we have the perfect person to keep it going. And so that, that helped give a lot of confidence to us. So tonight, I'm excited to make the recommendation for Rachel Jimenez to be our director of payroll.
Do we have a motion?
I have a
You have a motion and a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, show by the up lifted hand. Any opposed by the same sign? Motion carries. Congratulations, Ms. Jimenez.
President Hubert, members of the board, and Dr. Knoll, I'm so grateful and honored to have this opportunity to lead the, the payroll department for Conroe ISD, and I want to let you know that I do not take this responsibility lightly. I am blessed to work with an amazing team, and I appreciate the hard work and dedication that I see on display every single day. I would especially like to thank Becky Davis for the mentorship that she's provided for me over the past twenty years. It's enabled me to learn and to grow, and to feel like I'm able to take on this department. I also want to express my appreciation for Darren Rice and Karen Garza. I'm not sure where y'all are, but I'm, I'm just so appreciative of the support that you've shown for our department over all these years. Joining me here tonight is my husband, Sal. to learn and to grow into the role that when Becky came to talk to me about retiring, she said, "That department is my baby, but I know that we have the perfect person to keep it going." And so that, that helped give a lot of confidence to us. So tonight, I'm excited to make the recommendation for Rachel Jimenez to be our director of payroll.
Do we have a motion?
No.
A motion and a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, call the vote. All those in favor, show by the uplifted hand. Any opposed by the same sign, motion carries. Congratulations, Ms. Jimenez.
President Hubert, members of the board, Dr. Knoll, I'm so grateful and honored to have this opportunity to lead the payroll department for Conroe ISD. And I want to let you know that I do not take this responsibility lightly. I am blessed to work with an amazing team and I appreciate the hard work and dedication that I see on display every single day. I would especially like to thank Becky Davis for the mentorship that she's provided for me over the past 20 years. It's enabled me to learn and to grow and to feel like I'm able to take on this department. I also want to express my appreciation for Darren Rice and Karen Garza. I'm not sure where y'all are, but I'm, I'm just so appreciative of the support that you've shown for our department over all these years. Joining me here tonight is my husband, Sal. Sal's been a CISD teacher for the past 22 years. Although they could not be here tonight, my two children, Kirk and Cadence, also are products of Conroe ISD and my parents are both proud Conroe Tiger alumni. I appreciate their unwavering support and I'm honored and privileged to be able to be a part of serving the district that helped to nurture me and my family. Thank you.
Right before, I know I promised a recess and we'll do that, but before I do that, I wanted to commend the district about contingency planning. We just named one, two, three, four, five different positions. And what, what may not be advertised or talked about is the district is always looking for ways to mentor and you heard a lot of names tonight. And there's always a track because we understand that good leadership is gonna be groomed and taken and, and needed. And so I understand that our district does a great job of identifying the future leaders of our district and then helps them understand and know what it is that they need to do. And I think we saw a little bit of that on, of display, on display tonight. So I want to commend the district for always looking for that contingency plan so our district can continue to grow and prosper and love and teach students and allow them to give them every opportunity to be successful. So thank you for that, Dr. Knoll, and that contingency plan. With that, let's take about a five to seven minute recess. We are back in session. The time is 7:44. Moving on to item six, Administration Six A, Consider Accepting Donation of Items From the YMCA of Greater Houston for, for selected district campuses that host YMCA after-school programs.
All right, Dr. Shelley Winkler.
Good evening, board. Good evening, President Hubert, members of the board and Dr. Knoll. We are very fortunate in Conroe ISD to have some outstanding community partnerships and one of those is the YMCA. And we are here tonight to talk about a grant that the YMCA received, but in turn, they want to donate some items to us from that grant. So we are very grateful for that. With us tonight, we have Mr. Larry Taylor. He's the Executive Director of Youth Development for the Greater, YMCA of Greater Houston. Want to recognize him. You would stand up. Mr. Taylor is a huge advocate for our students and he just goes above and beyond for Conroe ISD. The other person I want to recognize who has worked tirelessly on this grant with Mr. Taylor is our other director of elementary education, Ms. Lisa Garrison. Ms. Garrison sought out this opportunity with Mr. Taylor and I don't know that she was quite prepared for the work that it takes to get some of this stuff done, but she found out very quickly, it's a lot of work, but the, the rewards from it are amazing. So we're hoping tonight that you see that as well. So we have YMCA at 24 of our elementary campuses and the YMCA offers quality childcare. Maybe some of you have also used the YMCA and it's based on a sliding scale. Tuition is based on sliding scale dependent on family income. So over the course of time, the YMCA was awarded this grant and all of 24 of our campuses benefited from this grant in some way, whether it was to attract quality employees, cover expenses for families who couldn't financially afford childcare, all 24 of our campuses received some kind of benefit from it. But some of our campuses are bigger operationally, they can hold more students and they don't have as many expenses. So there were some funds remaining in that grant for 16 campuses. And those 16 campuses are listed here. These programs typically have a capacity of about 60 to 70 students depending on the site, not always at full capacity, but these sites are very popular with our parents. So they receive these funds and just as you know, one of our jobs is to make sure that our resources are used appropriately throughout the community. The YMCA has that same vision. And so what they've done is that they have looked at each of these campuses listed on the previous slide and decided on an amount to give to those campuses and they will work with our principals to come up with the needs of campuses. So this could be playground enhancements, you might see the hundreds chart that, you know, is on the concrete outside, which was at Wilkinson, if you were at our pre-K fair the other day, cafeteria tables, sporting equipment and even technology. And once they purchase these items, they would like to donate them to us and give them to us and we would retain ownership of those items. And because we're not beneficial, we're not, we're not participating in the grant, we're just beneficiaries, there's no additional matching funds required for this. So this is a significant amount of money that we are happy to help them take off of their hands. So you see there, the amounts listed and it is $780,000 worth of equipment that our campuses can benefit from. And the coolest thing about this is it's not just for the students that attend the YMCA programs, all students at that campus can use them all day long. So we're very, very grateful to the YMCA and with that, we ask for the approval of accepting donated items from the YMCA.
All right. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion, questions, thoughts?
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you go back to the previous slide?
Sure.
I just didn't catch all the list of the items.
That's not an all-inclusive list, but those were the things that we felt like campuses would really kind of gravitate to the most.
Can we get an all-inclusive list?
Sure. Yeah. Do you want the what is allowable or what the, the campuses select once it's approved? Or both? Okay, we can get you that for sure.
Any other questions?
This is just great news. So well done, all of you for going after this. And it's gonna make a real big difference to these campuses. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank Ms. Garrison and Mr. Taylor.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, yes.
Outstanding. I appreciate it. It's just phenomenal, good news. Did we give thought in allocation of the title schools versus non-title schools?
The YMCA, they are the ones who, it was, since it was their grant, they were able to look at each of those campuses and those title campuses did get money. It might have just been used in a different way based on the YMCA requirements. And they looked at their expenses for this year and forecasted expenses for next year and some of the campuses had more expenses than others. But there are title campuses on this list that got money as well for these, this equipment.
Anything else? All right, seeing none. We have a motion and a second. All right, all those in favor of the motion, show by the uplifted hand. Any opposed by the same sign, motion carries.
Thank you so much.
All right. Item B, Receive Information Regarding District Rite Intruder Detection Audit.
Mr. McCord.
Mr. McCord.
Good evening, President Hubert, members of the board and Dr. Knoll. I'm here tonight to give you your April Intruder Detection Audit Update. Since we last met on March 21st, we've had 12 audits. Of those 12 audits, nine occurred in March and three have occurred in April. Of those audits, 11 have occurred without any finding, which is of course, the desired outcome. One on one spot, one portion of one campus, we did have a finding. Will be going forward tomorrow, also known as Wednesday, with our Safety and Security Committee meeting to ask for an in-service approval for that particular campus. And that is what I have for the April Intruder Detection Audit Update.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Pretty good. All right. Moving on to item C, Receive Information Regarding the Texas Library Association Annual Conference and Consider Conroe ISD Attendance.
All right, Dr. Upshaw.
Good evening, President Hubert, Dr. Knoll and members of the board. I come to you this evening, sorry about that. I come to you this evening to share information in reference to the annual Texas Library Association that's happening in Austin beginning tomorrow for the next four days. And as you know, librarians in Texas are required to complete a number of 200 professional learning hours every five years to remain active with their certificate. For these, for librarians, the continuing professional learning education requirements must focus on the following standards, content, area, knowledge and expertise and their specific skills of being public school librarians and also professional ethics and standards of conduct. As a Texas-specific conference, the TLA, which we reference this conference, provides this professional learning opportunity for our, our librarians in Texas that are specific to the needs that are addressed here forward by the Texas Education Agency or what we reference as TEA. Unlike classroom teachers, librarians have a very limited opportunity for this ongoing professional development. So the purpose of the TLA conference, it was organized over 120 years ago to promote and support improving that library system and services in Texas. With over 6,000 members, it is the largest library association in the entire United States. So the TLA conference over the average years pulls in approximately anywhere from 5,000 or 4,000 to 5,000 attendees, so it's very widely popular. And furthermore, it's the state's conference for the librarians to stay up to date on any staff development or legislation that's passed or so on, expectations from TEA. So this conference has a lot of sessions that our librarians can pick from and just in addition, I'd like to share that the conference's focus this year is on the idea of being able to empower children to read, to access and use authoritative information and using that to making sure it's a key six, to be successful in life, as we know there's a lot of power in our children being able to read. Some additional information, the majority of our CIC librarians are members of TLA and some of them serve on the roundtables. The roundtables are subcommittees. An example of that subcommittee would be like the Texas Library of Plubonic Books. They are a committee that looks at those books every year. We have had some librarians serve on that. Districts in our area that are attending is Tomball and Willis and we have particular districts in our area that are actually giving sessions themselves presenting, which is Umbel, Katy and Klein and Ucany. So to maintain competitive library programs for our schools and to have that knowledgeable staff to provide that service, it's important for our librarians to be able to go. So last year, we had five librarians attend in Conroe ISD and this year, we have seven attending in Conroe ISD. I'm open to any questions or any additional information.
Okay. Any questions?
I have a question. So you said there's seven that are going this year. Is this because those, only those seven need a continuing education credit?
No, they just chose to gather their continued education credits through this conference. One thing about being part of TLA is they offer a plethora of staff development. It's just not the conference, there's virtual opportunities, there's virtual meetings, there's virtual ongoing sessions that they can go in and log on when they're part of this through their membership.
So how are the specific librarians selected to go then, since there's only seven that are going?
They chose to go. It's not like a specific district that says we have a set number amount that this year we're gonna send 15 or five. They have chosen to probably in their activity fund that they have on campus to be able to attend this year. So it varies from year to year how many choose to go.
And this is something that the district pays for the seven librarians to go?
These particular librarians use district funds to go, yes, ma'am.
Okay. I just took a quick peek through their agenda that they have for the four days of sessions, breakout sessions, and I, I just saw some, some sessions that looked a little questionable and I didn't know if that was something that you guys were aware of. And so I just thought I would mention some of the different breakout sessions that they have. Read Something, Do Something, Empower Readers to Take Action Using Read Wrote Books, How Teachers, Authors and Librarians Can Fight Book Bans and Protect Inclusive Curricula. There are a couple other questionable ones that kind of, I feel like it's, it's using tax dollars to sort of usurp the authority of the board and it's questionable. So I was just wondering, I did notice there are other organizations that offer the CE Continuing Education Credits for librarians and I'm just wondering why we're, we're selecting this organization.
So currently, like we've mentioned before, this organization offers sessions not only for public school librarians, but also for community libraries. So our librarians know our expectations in Conroe ISD and we have discussed what sessions they are picking to go. So we have had that discussion with them.
Pardon me. When we send dollars to them, we are condoning their content and I don't find our taxpayers approving that and I find concern with that. No one else does.
It's similar to like any kind of like professional conference, there's going to be, you know, it's not just like your conference, it's to wider audience, right? So they have different material relevant for that wider audience. But just like when I go to an accounting one, which is a blast, I'm telling you, I, I don't go to sessions where they talk about the application of US GAAP because it's not relevant to my professional experience. So I think also our librarians know what is relevant to their professional experience from, from the, you know, sessions offered and some of them are really interesting. So I would even love to hear about their experience thereafter, they're done.
Did you say the topics are approved by TEA?
The topic is a Texas Library Association, so that is the place where they do offer sessions that are in accordance to the expectations in TEA.
But last year, after the bill was passed, Dr. Ibram Kendi, the godfather of CRT, was their keynote speaker. They also brought in the drag queen story hour sessions. Again, that's not in alignment with what the taxpayers in our county are looking for.
And exactly, I mean, that's a good point and, and we can see the data of what happened there, right? They, we had five librarians at that, that conference with Ibram Kendi and with, I don't know the particular drag queen, but we didn't, we didn't have over this year, like a bunch of CRT in our classrooms, right? Because the district does not condone that. At the top, we say we do not condone that, we do not have that in our campuses. We did not have drag, drag queen story hour, like we didn't have that.
I'm just stating that we're still paying.
Let's not talk over each other, Ms. Wilkens, please, go ahead.
Sorry, I spoke over Ms. Jane.
Okay.
I was speaking over Ms. Jane.
I was just wrapping up my.
Okay. I didn't mean to speak over you. We are still choosing where we can, where they can go. I mean, the librarians have other options and when you choose where to place our tax dollars, we need it to be representing our taxpayers.
Representing all of our taxpayers or just certain taxpayers?
I state that we need to be representing taxpayers of Montgomery County, Conroe ISD.
Hold on, this is our conversation. So it, are you, I'm trying to understand what you're saying, so help me understand. Are you implying that we're not representing all taxpayers in CICE?
We will never 100% represent everyone. We have to do the best job for every taxpayer, just like we're supposed to do the best job for every student and every educator in every situation that we can. We have to make the best decisions we can.
And by denying librarians to attend their own association is in the best interest of the taxpayers?
There are other locations they can go. If they want to go, we can't stop them from going, but we can stop taxpayer-funded dollars from paying for it.
There's, could you go back to the page where, how many breakout sessions there are? 300 sessions offered? So these seven, I mean, do you, the one, you listed five percent, how many did you?
There were more, that's just.
Yeah, there's just some that I grabbed.
Okay, but are there over?
We're still spending our taxpayer dollars to go to this organization when there are options. I'm not sure, I know that TEA just approved another organization, so I didn't know if, if the librarians are given a choice, since there are some new options, so.
So this is like you've mentioned before, not the only opportunity that librarians are getting their continuing education. This is one of the opportunities that seven of our librarians have chosen to get some of their hours this year.
Could you please?
Could you please list some of the options that you're speaking about?
Are you talking to me, the ones I just read? You'd like me to read them again?
No, no, the options for librarians, which new, which new conferences are popping up?
Sure, the Texas Innovative Library, no, Teachers Association.
ITT, Innovative Teachers of Texas.
Approved by TEA.
Okay, and who sponsors that?
Innovative Teachers of Texas.
But who is behind Innovative Teachers of Texas?
A bunch of teachers.
And who else?
Do you know, are you trying to get us some?
I'm asking, I'm asking you, because you have obviously researched it, so please let us know if you're suggesting alternatives, why we should send them there versus to the one that they're going to now.
Well, I just want, I mean, you can, you can answer the question, or you can also just say if you think it, that you think that it's right to send our librarians on taxpayer dollars to go to something that violates the law.
What, what law have we violated?
We have plenty of sessions that are offered that violate the critical race theory.
And are they going to those sessions? Maybe there are other districts that are looking for that information, but the teachers didn't, I mean, our librarians didn't attend the sessions that you were talking about last year, the Drag Queen Social Hour. I don't even think that was a conference session, I believe it was an after-hours event. I could be wrong, but.
I think they're still sending money to an organization that supports a continuing education like that.
Okay, interesting. I'd like to know where, who the backers are of the information for the other one that you presented.
Innovative Teachers of Texas is their own independent organization across the state.
But somebody backs them, somebody backs them.
If you know, if you could share it.
No, you all are the ones that have brought it, I don't know.
It sounds like you know something that we don't, and we know that it's Innovative Teachers of Texas, so.
ITT, I believe Melissa Martin and...
That's the only name I'm familiar with, yeah.
I would, we did receive an email from them, I think earlier this week.
Yes, Bailey, Bailey Martin, you're right.
It was a whole group of us. Dr. Upshaw.
Go ahead.
Dr. Upshaw, like, what do you need from us? I mean, maybe I'm just oversimplifying it.
I don't even have any discussion, so I'm trying to understand.
I'm just providing information as requested.
What's the expectation from us?
If I may, I was asked to put this on the agenda today, so.
So what's the expectation from us?
No, sir, I'm just providing information about the conference.
Sure, thank you, appreciate it.
So I'll just comment, I'll let you finish.
No, go ahead.
No, no, I'll let you finish, excuse me.
Go ahead, Ms. Olden.
I just move that we do not send our dollars to spend at TLA conferences. I make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a discussion.
Okay.
So again, I think this is a school board case in point, overstepping. We're outside of our lanes, and I think we need to, personally, I think we need to get back quick, fast, and in a hurry. I think this is personal agendas at play here. Anytime a school board is trying to tell librarians where they need to go to get continuous education, it just seems, in my opinion, to be the utmost waste of taxpayers' time. We keep using this, this excuse, or this justification, if we're using taxpayers' dollars to do this and do that, we shouldn't be doing it based on some small immaterial content when you're looking at overriding subject matter, overriding educational enrichment conference, their librarian should know what's in their best interest to go to, based on what we, as a school district, would expect, right? We can't let librarians decide where they go get their own continuous education out, I think that's ridiculous. I would quickly like to wrap up this discussion, so we can move on to things as worthwhile and as oppressing to this school district.
Well, we have a motion.
You have a motion?
We have a motion, so we can talk about it. Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Upshaw, Dr. Upshaw, aren't our librarians already there since the conference starts tomorrow?
Yes, ma'am. Depending, depending if they decided to go all four days.
I call the vote.
So it would be very unfair to take away funds that they are expecting to be paid for, because they're already there.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
I've been just.
Yes, ma'am.
These, our librarians, you know, have master's degrees, and oftentimes, masters of science, and while I'm sure they adore books, they are, you know, trained in a technical and data-driven approach on how to run libraries, and to stay, to stay current with those professional ideas, they have to attend conferences like that, like this, and I think they understand the values and expectations of the district, so give them, you know, a chance to live up to those things, they don't need us to micromanage them.
As I stated, I don't have a problem with them going, that's up to them, if that's what they choose to do. My concern came in using our CISE dollars from taxpayers, that was it. I don't have a, if that's where they choose to get their education, I can't, their continuing education, I'm not stopping them.
Mr. President, I call the vote.
And there are options.
I call the vote.
Can you restate the motion, please?
Ms. Olden, while I get the message, would you please?
I move that we do not use CISE taxpayer dollars to pay for TLA conference attendance.
Call the vote, all those in favor, show by the other side of the hand. Any opposed by the same time? Motion fails.
Mr. President, I vote, shall we move on, item D?
Item D. Receive information regarding student discipline.
Thank you, Ms. Upshaw.
Thank you, Dr. Upshaw.
I'm sorry, Dr. Upshaw, thank you for that information.
All right, Dr. Chris Hines.
Good evening, President Hubert, members of the board, Dr. Knoll. Tonight, I'm going to try to provide a somewhat brief, it won't be that brief, we'll try to keep it brief, since we're getting near my bedtime, but student, student behavior, student discipline, and multi-tiered systems of support, and there's a lot that's going to kind of go into this. We'll touch base on a little bit about the code of conduct, we'll talk about student behavior, we'll present some information about discipline placements, discipline accountability, and a little bit of data, and then wrap it up for you, and then answer any questions that we can. I want to say thank you to our students, our teachers, our parents, our administrators, our counselors, and all of our staff who really work very hard every day to make schools safe and welcoming learning environments for our students. So we'll start with kind of what is the code of conduct, I think that's, and there are a lot of pieces to this, and I apologize, but probably trying to just kind of work through in a way that makes sense. But really, code of conduct is from Chapter 37 of our Texas Education Code, and it outlines conduct requirements for public school districts in which we must define misconduct, and then what may result as, what happens as a result of that misconduct. Now, certain behaviors in Chapter 37 mandate certain administrative actions, while some behaviors allow for discretionary action on the part of the administrator. Behaviors include those that occur on campus, over than 300 feet of campus, or at a school-sponsored event. However, there are several behaviors that are included in the Chapter 37 that don't occur at school, such as Title V felonies, cyber crimes, that might be committed off campus and would result in action. So why do we have a code of conduct? Well, we have one for a lot of reasons, I just mentioned a few, to create a safe environment in which our children can learn, to encourage our students to engage in appropriate behaviors, to help our students change inappropriate behaviors, and of course, to establish expectations. And really, it's a big part, you know, we talk about building a culture of our school. Now, what must administrators consider in administering the code of conduct? Well, there, there are six basic things that are outlined in Chapter 37 that an administrator, when we're working with a student, we have to take into consideration as we kind of make a decision about what we're going to do. We have to consider self-defense, the intent or lack of intent on the part of the student, their disciplinary history, whether there's a disability, and does that disability substantially impair the student's capacity to appreciate what they've done, a student's conservator status with the Department of Family and Protective Services, roughly that, that students that are in foster care. And currently, we have 152 students that are in foster care, we've had at different times during the year, 251 students. We also have to take into consideration whether a child is homeless, and, you know, we've seen that number go up and down at different times. I know the first time we experienced a big influx was after Hurricane Katrina in New Orleans. We received about, almost 1,000 students from the New Orleans area, and then we had evacuations during Rita the same year, in 2005. We experienced a lot of homelessness, a kind of a bump after Ike in 2008, and of course, in 2016, we had two big floods, and 2017, we had Harvey, and we had Emelda in 18. So we've had some impact in our community that does result in homelessness, and we have to take that into consideration. Currently, we have 733 active students, we've had 890 at different times during the year. So we'll talk a little bit about behavior supports. So we talked about the code of conduct, that's talking about how we respond when students engage in certain behaviors, and certainly, we, we wanted, we want to support our students in learning appropriate behavior, and so behavior is pretty much approached, very similar to what we do with trying to teach a child reading or math, if they're struggling with behavior, we're going to come in and try intervention. So Conroy ISD's model includes tiered interventions and strategies to assist the campus in developing support plans for the student whose behavior is in need of improvement. And we have some people that actually specialize in this, but everybody works on this, so it's not just these people's job, we have administrators, counselors, teachers, paraprofessionals, everybody works on this, but to work on our student support services, we have a coordinator, we have 11 coaches, we have currently 13 behavior coaches, and 12 positive behavioral liaisons, and most of those are funded out of Title I. In addition, we're going to be adding two coaches to serve our highly mobile populations, and those were previously funded with our ESTER money. In addition, each campus also has a problem-solving team to support teachers when, with students that have need of support academically or behaviorally.
If we could hold our questions, questions in, thank you.
So just touching a little bit about PBIS, and foundations, and CHAMPs, and that's also discussed in Chapter 37, Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports is just that, it is a positive proactive instructional approach to strengthen school climate, to improve classroom management, and promote positive relationships in school, and provide students with social and behavioral skills needed to be successful learners. And really, we have two big parts in our PBIS program, one is foundations, which is really the school-wide, we work with teams with the school, and they do a great job, I know Denise is here tonight, she's our coordinator from Student Support Services, she does a great job, and this is really about helping a school develop their plan in terms of how are we as a school, what's acceptable here in the hallway, what's not acceptable, what are we going to do with lunch duty, how are we going to handle transitions, and those kinds of things. So this is worked on school-wide, and then we have CHAMPs, which is really more of a training that focuses on how a teacher manages their classroom, and this is about thinking about behavior management, and how to make database decisions, and to give tools to help a teacher manage their classroom, and, you know, what I can tell you, and I'll speak from my own experience as a teacher, you know, nothing that we get in college prepares you for actually what happens when you go into a classroom, and, and there's a lot, and there's a lot that we have to do and have to respond to. And all of our new teachers are trained in CHAMPs, and we also offer additional training if people need it and want it. This is just a quick look at our, our behavior model, and it's something that, you know, we've had for a few years, but it basically kind of outlines how we, we get into the intensive interventions up top, but we want to start with some basic kind of school-wide expectations, and how we respond, how we create a safe environment, and how we manage our classrooms. So how does this look in a school setting? It could look a lot of different ways in different schools, and depending on the age of the learners, but certainly, there's, there's things that are going on. We're doing things to try to promote positive behaviors, such as, and one of the ones that you probably, if you've had children get these, SAEs, which are Students Achieving Excellence referrals, or like positive referrals, which is good, because I know, last time I looked, we've had 96,000 discipline referrals this year, and so we've had several thousand positive referrals. We have student awards, added privileges, we have some schools that run token systems where students can accumulate something and trade it for something. We also have interventions, and those could be things like mentoring, targeted attention, visual cueing, academic assistance, behavior contracting, social skills training, structured reinforcement, teaching them replacement behaviors, right, "Don't do this, but let's do this." So all those things are things that we work on with students. How about disciplinary, but it doesn't always work, right? So sometimes, we also have to deal with responding to when a student misbehaves, and depending on what the infraction is, there could be a range of responses, and most of these, we experienced when we were in school, so we all kind of are familiar with them. You know, we look up examples, includes loss of privileges, or assignment of discipline consequences, such as we have after-school detention, we have Saturday detention, in-school suspension, out-of-school suspension, and we cannot, when we, when we give a student out-of-school suspension, we are limited to three days, so we can't exceed that. And each of those days, that student is counted as absent, and that also impacts their attendance. We also use the assignment to the District Alternative Education Program, which you'll hear is referred to as the DAEP, and then finally, the highest level is an expulsion, which results in assignment to the Juvenile Justice Alternative Education Program, which is a countywide campus setting. Currently, we have 46 students in the JJAP, it has a capacity of 115, and, and really, I believe it's, I came to the district office in 2003, and I think it's the same size as it was then, and to put that in perspective, in 2003, we had a student enrollment of 37,835. Today, when I looked, we were at 71,448, so you can see how much we've grown. In 2003, 27.4% of our students were economically disadvantaged, today it's 44.8%, and we know there's a correlation between economic status and discipline.
But to be clear on that, just for, just for clarity's sake, we have 46 students there, but all the other seats are full with students from other school districts. It's full.
It is at capacity, it is at capacity. So we're at that point now, at this time of the year in the spring, is basically, if we're going to get somebody in, somebody's got to come out. Students must be placed in an educational program if they're going to be removed from class for an extended period of time, and always, you know, just drop the reminder that we are still responsible for a child's academic performance as well, so we're going to be mindful of that, their college and career, military readiness, their status as a completer are all part of our accountability system. Removal from class generally has an impact on student learning, we know that, but, you know, probably, I would capture, I think, and this has been this way, I've been in education 40 years, and this has been that way for 40 years, there's this tension, or kind of this stress that, balancing between, how do you meet this individual needs, and working with this child, and keeping them learning, and then managing, preserving the needs of this larger community or the classroom, right, not letting it become disruptive, and so that is a challenge our administrators face daily, and they do an outstanding job. Disciplinary placements include, as I mentioned, five, 10, and 15-day placements, and then the JJAP. We do, it's not a placement, but you have heard of it, it's the Juvenile Detention Center, that's a campus that we operate, that really serves students who are currently incarcerated, so they're in county residence, so if they're taken into custody by the county, we serve them there, that is not a disciplinary placement, that's a residential facility. Mention a few things about, they're also in Chapter 37, parental involvement, we know that parents are crucial partners in educating and teaching students, and we know that their support is absolutely necessary if we're going to achieve improved student behavior. We also require to notify parents in a timely manner when we're changing placement of their child, in other words, removing them from the classroom for disciplinary reasons. Out-ofplacement defines the number of days that a student has been removed from a classroom to either in-school suspension, out-of-school suspension, or assigned to the DAEP for discretionary purposes, and I'll have to go back, if you remember that at the beginning, I said there's two kinds of responses that are in the discipline code, those that are required, and those that are considered discretionary, and so when we use discretionary placements, theirs are considered to be ones that we didn't have to do, and so they're counted in the, in the days of out-ofplacement. Due process involves simply that, is, is making sure that a student has an opportunity to give their side of the story, right, what happened, and generally, the, the longer a student is going to be removed... And generally, the longer a student is going to be removed from an educational setting, the more appeals and the more, the more options are available to have their due process. So it's like everything, it's a lot of days out, I get to appeal that more. Depending on the length of removal, also, an assessment of academic growth must be considered if more than ninety days. And as I shared previously, and I'll go back, we use, currently in our DAEP, five- and ten- and fifteen-day placements, which are short. And you know, I will say that's something, and I'll mention it later on, that one of the things we're looking at is a long-term option for the DAEP. But certainly, that is, you know, there's some upside and downside to it, right? So the upside to short-term is you're out of class less, you're back in class faster. The downside, and I'll show it to you later, is we probably do more discretionary expulsions as a result. So kind of switching gears and moving into discipline accountability and special populations and placements, I want to cover a few of these. So you know, the question is, is can we just do discipline? Yes, we do discipline, or we have discipline. Actually, for me personally, I don't think of discipline as something that we do, or we think, I personally think of it disciplined more as a quality that we want instilled in our kids, right? Self-discipline, and the ability to make good decisions and interact with others appropriately. And the state uses disciplined data system for accountability purposes in the area of student discipline. The things that we are scored on in this data validation indicators include length of out-of-school suspension, unauthorized expulsion of a student, students aged ten or older, unauthorized DAEP placements for students under six, high number of discretionary DAEP placements, black or African-American discretionary DAEP placements, and Hispanic discretionary DAEP placements. In addition to those data validation indicators, we also have other accountability indicators that are somewhat related to discipline placements. One is being graduation. So we do want to keep track of our completers. We know there's a relationship between students who graduate and their attendance. Attendance is also something that's impacted by disciplinary placements. Just, also, there is one area, and the taper that we are scored on, and that is the students with disciplinary placements, which is the percentage of students that are removed to a DAEP or JJAP. The last year they had was twenty-twenty-one. And if you're wondering, we were point six, that's point six percent of our student population, which is exactly equal to the state average of point six. Can a student below, just some questions that come up. I mentioned age, you know, as being one that's kind of complicated in the discipline or in the Code of Conduct. But a student below grade three, or if a student is homeless, they may not be placed in out-of-school suspension unless the student engages in certain conduct. And those are really weapons, assaults, or drug-related charges. So those are the three things, those three areas can result in suspension. Other than that, we cannot suspend a child in third grade or below, or a student who's homeless. And probably, one of the things that's challenging on that for us is a student may, during the year, not be homeless and get one of those things. And then during the year, they become homeless, and then we change their code, and then we get dinged on the system. But there's nothing we can do about that. And I'll mention this about, you know, coding, you know, someone will ask me like, what's our, we can look something up, ask me a report. Today, it says this, tomorrow, it may say something different because it's in flux. So students will get coded one way, and then it may change three days later, a week later. A student may be charged with this charge, which results in this entry in the Code of Conduct. And then that charge gets reduced by the county attorney or something, and then we change the code. So it is something that moves quite a bit, and I know that's frustrating to people. So can a student below ten years of age be assigned to the DAP? And the answer to that question is yes, they can. We do have students, now that we're required to make sure they're kept separate from the older students, and we do that, so they have their own classroom, and it's on a whole separate part of the building. And it's, and a student between six and nine shall go to DAP if they engage in any offense that's expellable, so they don't get expelled at that age, but they do go to DAEP. And then if they're below six, they even go if they have a firearms violation. So what about students in special education? Well, special education has its own set of rules. It is regulated at the federal level, and it has procedures and protections for students to ensure compliance with the Individuals with Disabilities Act, which we refer to as IDEA. So there are some examples. If a student's having behavior issues that are increasing, we're required to go back to the ARD Committee to address and develop a plan. If there is a removal, we have to have an MDR, or Manifestation Determination Review first, before we can change that student's placement. And if it's determined that the behavior is related to their disability, we cannot remove the student. Student services for a student can only be removed for up to ten days. After this, we have to provide services. We must always consider the least restrictive environment in making decisions for our students in special education. And if a student in evaluation, that is, if we're going through the evaluation process to determine if they qualify for special education, we must consider their potential disability and effect on the behavior before determining discipline for the student. I know Dr. Kendra Witten, you should delight somewhere. Accountability Results, RDA. So special education, they have their own accountability system for this. It's what we refer to as RDA, and it just monitors the federal program. So it has indicators for bilingual education, for special education, for career and technology education. And in the special education area, it specifically includes these five indicators that we get scored on in terms of how many of these that we have, and that is out-of-school suspensions, expulsions, and so on. We also have special education programs that serve our students with, that have needs in the area of behavior. We have the two big ones that I would just mention and list, our social development class, and these are, these classes support students who receive services in a classroom either for a portion of the day or for all the day. And so we have students in those classes. We also have students that are in our PASS program, which is primarily focusing on supporting students who are returning to the general education environment. So they're going out classes, but we're trying to support them, to keep them in their out classes. Next year, as part of our budget presentation, we plan on adding nine SDC units and nine PASS units to serve our growing student population, which would give us a total of forty-nine behavior units throughout the district. And typically, a unit is comprised of one teacher and one paraprofessional, and that could change a little bit depending on the enrollment. Little bit of data, just thought this might be interesting to kind of give you a feel for how much of this that we handle. And this is a look at three years, and I just will give the, kind of the reminder about the previous two years. In two thousand and twenty-one, that was our year, we started with remote learning as an option. So we started the year with probably almost half our students remote learning, and finished the year with about eighty-five percent in-person. And then twenty-one, twenty-two is our first year back. And then this year, this is through mid-April, but you can kind of get a quick look at. And one of the areas, and we know it, when the state looks at our data, we know we're going to be high on the discretionary expulsions, as I mentioned, because we don't have a long-term DAEP, we tend to rely on that more for more serious offenses that are, you can expel but on a discretionary basis. And so we look like we probably expel more students than our peers, if you look at data, but most of them don't have short-term DAEPs either. So it kind of gives you that look. But you can see where we look at, where we're at this year, we're pretty much on track to probably pass up our numbers from last year, which we'd expect with growth, but you can, you can kind of get a feel with ISS is very popular. And these are, by the way, actions, these are not number of students, so a student could be counted multiple times. And that's another probably disadvantage of the short-term DAEP, is I could go three times, and I'll count each time. The other reality is, in our system, and this is, this is not unique to just Conroe, is a student will get counted multiple times for the same offense in different categories. And I'll give you an example. Let's say, probably, one of our biggest reasons that a student goes to DAP based on our data is drugs, and more specifically vaping THC. So a student brings THC vaping, they might be sent home tomorrow, so they got OSS. And then they were waiting to go to DAP, they went to ISS for three days, while they got set up to go to DAEP, and then they went to DAEP. So they're going to count, they're going to show up at all three of those numbers. And so it varies depending on the offense or the time of the year. But traditionally, I would say, it does reflect multiples. And you can see the difference between discretionary's and mandatory's, and where that shows up. Crisis referrals, something else that I'll mention is, and I know I saw an article, I guess back in March, I think in the paper, and the Sheriff's Department was talking about their mental health calls going up. And I would say it's no different for our schools, that we've seen an increase in calls. And again, hard to put a number to it, or hard to give you a reason. I mean, obviously, we're growing as a school district during all this time, and that can have a lot to do with it. But certainly, we have seen a number go up in crisis referrals. Now, two thousand and nineteen, twenty, we didn't come back after spring break, so we lost those nine weeks. So that data is going to be down a little bit. But you can see the next year, we came back with the remote learning option, was eight thirty-two, jumped up last year over a thousand, and at the end of March, we were at six hundred and sixty-five. And so, you know, we're having a lot of these there going through, and again, we have to respond, respond to them. Threat assessments, this was something that was added in Senate Bill Eleven. And this is when, if there's an outcry of some kind of a threat either to oneself or to others, we are required to convene a group and conduct a threat assessment. The core members include an administrator, a counselor, a police officer, and a representative from special education. So you can see, this is, and this does not include any separate assessments that are conducted by the police department as part of their investigation. So sometimes they'll get a call in the middle of the night, and they're doing their own. But we go through this process, and this is just, I think, a good slide to see how that number, and this includes all of them, including the ones that, you know, they might have met and said, this isn't really a good threat, we're not going to do anything, or, you know, we need to refer and take action right away. And so there's a whole continuum in here, but this is how many. But you can see the number has gone up, and we've already surpassed five hundred and fifty this year. There's some other challenges that we've certainly been experiencing with, when it comes to student behavior. And again, these aren't anything that are excuses, they're just challenges, things that we have to work on and deal with. One is we've had really rapid growth as a district, so we know that. We've also had rapid growth in our early grades. And I think about it, in two thousand and eight, we went to all-day kindergarten, and then in two thousand and twenty, and twenty-one, we went to all-day pre-K. And so having pre-K students all there, I looked the other day, I think we have over three thousand referrals for pre-K students. And, you know, most of them being tardy, by the way. But you can see that, that, you know, obviously, going to school and learning about school is a challenge, particularly for younger students. And certainly, doing it all day is an adjustment, and when they get tired and things. But we've also seen, I don't have a number on this, but we've also seen some challenges, I think, post-COVID, right? Where, you know, if you think about a student who shows up this year who's four, they might have spent two years not socializing much or getting out much, and then going to school and having all this structure and expectations, and really not knowing how to play well with others and do some things. So we've seen some of that. We don't, I don't have a good way of putting a number to it, but certainly, I think it's reasonable to believe that there's been some impact on our, especially our younger children who missed out on some socialization that may have gone on those couple of years prior to getting into pre-K or kindergarten. And so there's certainly been some of that, but obviously, another challenge has just been our growth. Mobility has always been a challenge for us, the things we grow. We know we have students that move in, we have students that move out. Our mobility rate currently is about thirteen point five percent. And so that means you're, you know, you're just dealing with new students all the time. Our DAP, I mentioned that already, you know, sometimes that's a little bit of a limitation for us, and sometimes it's one of our strengths. It just depends on the situation, but it's certainly something we work with. Our JJAP capacity, I've mentioned already, is a limitation for us. Again, we share that with all the school districts in the county. Campus crowding is a challenge for us, because certainly, when you don't have space, you don't have the ability to spread out, you don't have the ability to do something specialized sometimes, so that becomes a reality. In addition, the more people that are on a campus, we've learned this, the more, and I always say this, the more interactions there are. And the more interactions there are, the more possibility there is for conflict. And so, and it's not a direct relationship, it's an exponential relationship. So the more we add, it just goes up way, way bigger. So having big schools can result in just more stuff happening. We've talked about mental health challenges, we've talked about staffing shortages. I know, last time I looked, we were about, one of the other limitations that comes up is our inability to share private information with families. I know it's sometimes very frustrating because people want to know, like, well, what happened to this student, and why didn't you do this? And we don't get to share, the student has a disability, we don't get to share private information, that's not their child. And so that frustrates people at times. Transportation can be a limitation on what we want to do, if we want to move students somewhere. We can only do what we can actually pull off in terms of transportation. And then social media is another, one of those challenging areas for us. You know, both in terms of our staff, I know we did a waiver today based on social media threats, you know, for attendance. So our administrators spend a lot of time, especially at the secondary level, chasing a lot of social media things. And it's just become a major drain on our resources and our time and our energy. We're chasing rumors, we're chasing things that are true, things that aren't true, you got to check everything out. But it's a lot, and there's a lot going on with that. And then you have misinformation being passed as well, and that adds to challenges. So that's one of those big challenges that staff deals with every day. We do have ongoing staff training in a lot of different areas. I know you approved back in September, August, our training plan for the district, which included all those Safe School courses that we do. But teachers are our greatest resource, they receive training on numerous topics, many of which are in their own subject areas. But we also include things like bullying and reporting child abuse, human trafficking, sexual harassment and misconduct, the training in their multi-hazard plan, responding to active shooters, youth suicide awareness and prevention. All of our new teachers receive training in classroom management and trauma-informed practices. Many of our administrators have been through the mental first aid, mental health first aid training. And again, and we're continuing to work on cultural awareness and working with our diverse student populations and our resiliency support. So, you know, these are things that, you know, we've learned over time, that our kids, that the more their household looks like the culture of a school, the more successful they are. But we have more and more kids who come to us from households where the culture doesn't look as much like the school. And so they have to adapt and adjust, and we have to support them and help them kind of, kind of, you know, figure out how school works. So what are we doing to help support our teachers and our campuses with student behavior issues? You know, we're excited about a lot of things we're pushing in for next year. We have, in the budget plans so far, there's two hundred and forty-one point five teachers, and that includes a DAEP teacher. Also, it includes eighteen behavior teachers for the support units for behavior support, twenty-nine instructional coaches, which we also view as a group of people that should be able to support our teachers with classroom management and dealing with difficult student behaviors. Fifteen assistant principals, nine counselors, student support, two student support coaches to help with our high number of students in foster care. And I think it's important to mention, you know, mentioned earlier on that we have foster care, we also have in our, in our school district, several group homes that bring in clusters of students that come to a school. And we have found that we have to be able to respond, because the school might not just get one student, they might get four students that need a lot of help. And then we have three social service liaisons for dropout prevention, adding a support team to assist campuses that have high needs with our younger students, really trying to focus on that pre-K to grade two. Five, and for special education, five LSSPs, five diagnosticians, ten ARD facilitators, a behavior specialist, and a coordinator. We are also adding the number of seats available to serve students with severe behavior needs that are non-public day school. So we've added some seats there. I will mention that this doesn't include the two hundred-plus positions that are already there in ESER. I will mention that this doesn't include the two hundred-plus positions that are already there in ESER. So other things that we're looking at, we're looking at the feasibility of adding a long-term D A E P component to our discipline placement options for campus administrators. And, you know, we do have some limitations, this requires additional space and staff. And then, but we do think it would reduce our number of discretionary expulsions. So it's something that, that we want to keep looking at. And given our size, it's, it's something that we've been looking at for several years. You know, the student discipline system, and I know we've given you a lot of information, it's complex and it's largely imposed upon us by, by law. Each child is different, and to make it more difficult, there are different rules for different students. It's complicated, but there are a set of rules that we must follow. Our education system is created to teach students basic academic skills, but our staff faces many other challenges daily, including managing difficult student behavior and helping students adapt to social settings. Our focus is on helping all students to succeed regardless of whether they experience poverty, they live in foster care, they have health challenges, they're in a mobile household, whether they've experienced abuse, whether they're hungry, whether they've experienced trauma or homelessness or anything else. Our teachers, administrators, and support staff do a wonderful job each and every day. They show up and they love all of our students. And I, I for one feel blessed that I've been able to work with so many caring and dedicated individuals. Unfortunately, we're not able to solve all the world's problems at school. And, but while our students are with us, we want them to learn and grow. We want to provide the support that will enable them to learn and thrive at school, to be resilient, and to be prepared for their next chapter. And so those are the things that we work on. And I will say, I'm just proud of our teachers and staff, they do a great job every day.
Thank you, Dr. Heinz. I'm sure we have some questions for you, if you've got some time. Open it up to questions, comments.
I first, me and my wonderful voice right now, I want to say thank you very much. When I wanted to open up a dialogue and discussion about discipline, I didn't mean to make you have to go through a huge report. I just wanted to ask some questions like.
I'm sorry.
One, our teachers are, that's one of the major complaints I hear, is the discipline issues in the classroom. And our teachers are more than adequately trained in classroom management skills. But yet, things are progressively getting worse in younger grades. And what can we do? Do we need to add more assistance for? A lot of times, they send them to the principal's office and they're on overload. The principal or the A P, they're on overload. And the student has to come back. And then it's disruptive in the classroom. What is our, what actions can we take as a board to help our teachers?
I would, I want to go back to that. Probably the one slide that I can't stress enough is, is this one. What you, as a, as a board, and you do have this in your, kind of your wheelhouse, is we, we can provide extra support. And you'll notice fifteen assistant principals, and the bulk of those are at elementary schools. And, um, and that is an area that we, we recognize, right? Because our, our, our schools have a lot going on. Like, I could have, you know, I could be tied up in this meeting, I could have another assistant principal tied up in our meeting, and there's nobody there to come, to come, to come down.
That's true.
And so really trying to work on better staffing. So this year, we've addressed, I know it was presented in the workshop for you, that we've adjusted some of our staffing formulas to try to reduce, particularly target our elementary schools and our intermediate schools that have our, some of the biggest challenges. I think expanding our, uh, our programs with our, um, students with special needs is important, having more spaces, being in more locations, supporting our, our evaluation staff, adding more staff is important. So all these things, you know, we struggle with, as I mentioned, and that's assuming we can find people.
Right.
Uh, and that's a big challenge for us. And our H R department does a great job helping recruit, but, but that is, is an ongoing challenge. You see, there's nine counselors up there. Again, a lot of those, we've tried to reduce the threshold and we've had more counselors. We added several this year and we've added several last year. We're really trying to beef it up in terms of who's available. You know, one of the, one of the things that we're doing this year too, and I'm going to stress this is on the instructional coaches. And this, we think, do you think, I think, you know, I won't be around to see it through, but, but I think it's going to happen, which is by investing in these instructional coaches, and we're doing it in reading and math. But it's an ability to have two more people in that building trained also in behavior, in behavior support and what, how we can help teachers respond. You know, that's important. I think getting our teacher numbers with managing class loads, all these things are going to be part of, I think, an overall process of, you know, having, and up there also, as mentioned, having student support teams that can respond to some campuses that have high needs. Because it's going to happen, right? I'm going to have a student, we have it now, where this student is a lot. It's a four-person kind of a program. We have three or four people tied up working with one student for two weeks or three weeks trying to help that child be successful. And, and that's all commitment. And so, but we have to have the people to do it. So, you know, I'll just put my, my commercial in, which is the most important thing we can do is staff with enough people to get out. We've always prided ourselves on being light administratively. And I think, you get into that question of it, there's a point where we don't have enough people to go around and we don't have enough people to.
But they don't all have to be administrative.
They do not.
I mean, we could bring in other people to help that are not administrative level.
Well, we do, and we have, you know, a, a lot of the schools, also by putting in the coaches, especially for our title schools, it's freed up money. And many of them are, are using it to get a behavior coach or a, a student behavior liaison. And what the difference would be is generally, a liaison might be someone who's not a teacher. But they come from maybe a background of working in private hospital or, or working in with behavior, specifically in an outside of a school setting. So we have two kinds of folks that come in and help schools with that.
But, uh, two things on that, I'll, I promise, two things on that. One, these ESER funds, we're already been using that and we are still where we are. So that's a concern to me. And the second thing is those behavior liaisons aren't for discipline. They're for, like, training and mentoring and working with that student, which is great. But that's not handling discipline issues that are ongoing.
Discipline, remember, discipline is the one function that is an administrative function. So it's always going to be an administrator when it, that deals with student discipline. And that's why those A Ps are so important.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Um, my question was involvement of parents. When we have a student where we're utilizing four personnel to handle behavioral issues, what is the role of the parent in that? I mean, are we, how are, how are they also responsible for the behavior of their child?
Well, and they're, you know, that's a good question. It's going to depend on the child, and it's going to depend on the family and where the family's at and what they can do and what they can't do. And, you know, I don't, I don't feel comfortable just making a general statement about what that is. Obviously, what, what we've experienced is the, the more support we can get, usually the better it goes. But it's going to vary from family to family in terms of what that looks like and what they're able to do or not able to do. And, and generally, it, it's, especially for the little ones, and, and this has been going on even pre, pre-pandemic. We saw this seven, eight years ago, you know, I go back. We, we started seeing a bubble up of, of more and more students that come early grades that, that just don't know how to play school, right? And so it's been, you know, an ongoing challenge. And generally, a large number of those students with working with them, they do okay, they get there. There's always a few that don't, and they might end up being referred to a special program and receiving special services. But you have to kind of, kind of sort through it and figure out what do we got? And how do we, how do we best meet that child's needs? But each child is going to be different and they're, they're going to respond differently. But parents are partners and they really are important. And so having them come up, work with us, doing things at home. We often talk about things we're going to do at school and what does that look like at home? And, uh, we've had a lot of luck with that. And so, I mean, I feel, feel generally positive about it, but again, you know, we run into different challenges. You might run into someone who's not home much, you know, and, and maybe there's older siblings doing a lot of the care. Or, and there's different, like I said, there's different challenges that, that, that our children experience and, and we have to work with. But, uh, we have folks that make home visits, we have folks that, um, you know, provide all kinds of support. We have referrals to outside groups. And that's where those three social service liaisons are a really good example. Mr. Chavez's department, which is, um, community outreach, um, his folks do a lot of visits. They'll do, make home visits and they'll work with families and help them get connected with, you know, we help people get connected with Tri County. And in some of our schools, we even have the Tri County services actually come there. So, because they have difficulty getting to it. So we have some really, um, some good partnerships, we have some success. I won't sit here and say, or stand here and say that we're always successful. You know, we're not, we work through it. Our, our goal is to be a hundred percent, but, uh, some, some cases are harder than others, some take longer than others, and we just work through it.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Baylor, I think, uh, James Baylor spoke that we're not following policy on progression of discipline. I can't speak to that because I don't know, but he was mentioning that. My concern is what we're doing is not working. And we have to, we have got to help on our campuses some way with our T. You were right, the clo, the closer proximity to students, the bigger the tinderbox. The things happening in the classroom, there are sometimes it's educational, you know, sped or whatever. But in general, there is a lack of respect on a lot of our campuses, not all of them. Many of our, I mean, there are many campuses, things are going great. We've got to figure out what we've got to do to improve as a whole across the culture on those schools that are struggling so much.
Do you have any recommendations?
I'd be happy to work on a committee with it. I would be happy. I think it starts with an honest discussion with our teachers.
With what?
With our teachers. They're the ones struggling because they, they're, they've got twenty-two kids in their classrooms and they are trained, I know that. They are trained in classroom management skills. And these students are beyond either that or repercussion. It's the follow-up, it's the discipline behind it, in my experience in the classroom. I think our teachers could, could really shed light for us and help us to know what they need. The ones I've talked to very much have. There, I, I, I think that is why we're losing, from what I've been told. That is why our teachers are leaving in bigger numbers.
Is only because of the discipline?
Is the, the discipline, lack of discipline, lack of quality work environment related to discipline, inability to actually educate at the level that Conrad Hasty has the capability of doing and our educators are capable of doing. These teachers are trained and experienced. It's, it's just they've got to get some assistance somehow.
That's what I heard him say, was that discipline is at the administrative level?
Yes.
Is that right? So it's not the teachers, so the teachers aren't.
No. Yes, no, but once it gets past them and they do a referral, he said we had ninety-six thousand referrals. I'd be curious to know what the breakdown was on, I mean, it would obviously be huge. But I'd be curious to know what the breakdown was on the offense and what happened. And how many of those were repeat offenders? I spoke with teachers that, or principals that said, we could pretty much narrow a lot of our problems down to, as he stated, repeat offenders, twenty possible real issues in our school.
We do, and, and it sometimes is necessary for us to come in and do a reset, and we do. I know we've done a couple here in the last year or so. And, and by a reset, I mean really working with a campus extensively, kind of moving in and kind of reevaluating what they're doing and how they're doing it. And so that's something that, that is ongoing. And, and to answer your question, that's usually what we find, right? When we start looking at the data, now you can find out that fifteen students account for a hundred and twenty-five of their four hundred referrals that they've had, you know? And, and so, and then really, when you start thinking about it, and that's something that, that Kim, Kim Earthman's here and Denise Griffin are here, and something that they do, uh, and their team does when they go onto a campus is really helping, helping the campus identify, hey, here's who we should be focusing on, this is what we're going to do. And help them kind of implement a plan and, and then stick to the plan. Probably the biggest thing that gets, and it's hard to make a generalization because I don't think it's fair. People get busy, people get overwhelmed, there's a lot going on. And again, I'm not making excuses. I think, we, our goal is to, to be the best, right? And so we, we don't want folks to feel like they didn't get supported or they didn't get the, the, the help they needed. And that's why that communication is so important. And, um, you know, and one of the areas I mentioned earlier that too, that we work on is, is really trying to build capacity within that team, right? So within the school team. And it's not an easy thing. Dealing with student behavior is very challenging. And, you know, and it's, it's something that, like I said, it's different for every child. Every, students bring different things to the table, they have different experiences at home, they have different expectations. So it's something that, that they work through very carefully. But, um, we do have teams that respond and we do work with schools that, when we, when we know they need the help, we'll come out and target that. And so, you know, that's the other thing I would just always encourage. If you, if you hear about, you say, hey, I'm worried about a certain school, let us know, you know, we'll go back, take a look. But we also look at their data and, and we do try to come in and help, um, help them really make sure that they have a plan that makes sense and that it's, it's targeting the right things and the right interventions. And we've had some good success with that.
Yeah. I, I like the, um, first of all, thank you for the overview here, I learned some things. And I like the idea of using a data-driven approach, right? We should always try and separate the anecdotal evidence, right, to what is really happening in the data. Um, I also spoke to some campuses about how we could better support as a board and what has worked on campuses, specifically Title I campuses. And they mentioned things like behavior coach, family engagement liaison, communities in schools, academic interventionist. They mentioned those positions and also counselors who are, are free to do counselor, counselor work. They mentioned those positions really drive improvement on their campuses. And I think the board is signaling to y'all that we are behind what you need, you know, to, to really drive improvement. And so these, these positions, I mean, kept being named to these. So maybe we could look at how, um, we could give campuses that, that need, um, need additional support based on the data, um, what they need to be successful.
And, and I might, may just make a note on that. And Dr. Winkler would probably could speak to this much better than, than I. But I think what we, what we're seeing more now, the challenges that are coming forward, you go to a title school, they have title funds and they can often get those type of positions. What we're seeing more common now is the behavior issues that historically we would have seen only at title schools, we are now seeing at all of our schools.
Yeah.
But those schools that are not, don't receive title funds, they don't have the extra funds to fund those types of positions. And so that's where, what Dr. Heinz has mentioned in here, we've really tried to lean into that now.
Because we see it work.
Because they didn't even have instructional co, you know, our non-title schools didn't even have instructional coaches. And, and many of our elementaries in that situation, they had one counselor, one A P, one principal. So, you know, the most disconcerting thing for a teacher is when it's going bad and you pick up the phone and call and no one comes. Like, that's the worst possible scenario. But in those places, that happened because those, they're really the only three that aren't assigned with kids somewhere. So we are trying now to fund more of those, those positions for non-title schools because they need it and.
But we're still continuing, after three years with these positions, we're still continuing to see a growth, so.
Yeah, that, these are all, what you're seeing here are all in addition to, yes, these are.
In addition to the F.
These are additions.
That is what I was going to ask.
This is the next step.
Are included in next year.
When you asked me to wait, that was what I was trying to clarify.
Yeah.
These are additions, I'm sorry to make that clear. And, and I will say this, by far and away, and then if someone asks a question, I don't have it in front of me, but I could tell you by far and away, the number one referral that we get. I think, let's see, guess.
The D A P.
The D A P?
Tardies.
Oh, tardies.
That's your tardies. They account for probably.
But honestly.
More than half.
I will tell you though, that when you stop the little stuff and you're consistent on the little stuff, it helps curb the big stuff. on the little stuff, it helps curb the big stuff. And that's what we're facing, which still, if we're looking to double what we did with the SIR funds, which is what I was just saying, we're still having a problem. So, doing the same thing, I don't know, is going to make it any better. I think we need to look at options.
Honing in on these repeat offenders too, these fifteen or twenty.
Being consistent.
And we can be, it's just the, the challenges that he mentioned earlier is, um, which we'll, we'll never speak to publicly because it's not things that we can speak to people, but depending on a child's situation, our administrators by law must consider certain things and then cer- certain children have certain protections. So, agreed, there are targets, but sometimes even when we're targeting and we are working, uh, the view from the outside, people may not be able to see that and we, and we cannot legally speak to it. Doesn't mean that they're not trying, but it, but, but agreed. And I think we've seen examples of that, like as Dr. Heinz mentioned, campuses that we've gone in, uh, and, um, and, and really focused on, Kim and her team have done a great job. The, the, I think the big picture reality is chapter thirty-seven and the, the punishments, if you would say, that are available to us are not deterrents enough to change behavior. We have to invest in the front end of this operation, right? Like, you have to, you have to reinvest because just to, to keep giving a punishment at the end is not going, we've seen it, it's, you know, that's proven, right? There's data there, it's anecdotal, you know, all the things. We've proven that that's not gonna fix it. So, we have to invest on the front end with kids more, trying to figure out what their problems are, address that, bring parents in.
Yeah.
Engage them in the processes and when you identify those with team or whatever it may be, absolutely, that's the.
With Dr. Noel, Dr. Heinz, I also heard you say that on the, like, when you're talking about JJAP and DAP, we have limited seats and you said, "We're completely full right now." So, if you have a student that now qualifies for one of those types of, of punishments or placements and there's no seat available, what are you faced with? What do you, what do you do in that scenario?
So, right now, the most common and all of Dr. Povich, probably happens more at the high school level if you want us to address that, but it, not, what I think and what we're doing is, is generally it's, um, kind of one of two options. If they're, we're waiting on an expulsion seat, they might sit at the DAP for two weeks or three weeks and then, and then we go through that process of maybe looking some of the, at the JJ who's been there for thirty days or forty-five days.
Doesn't that also back up your ISS and, and everything?
It does back up things.
It just backs up everything, correct?
Is that fair enough, Dr. Povich? It does back up, it does. We get, we get backed up, which causes even more multiple entries, right? Because they might be OSS for three days and then they go to ISS for five days and then they go to DAP for ten days waiting for their seat at the JJ.
And even if you're, and I'll, I'll let you speak to this as well, but even when you remove this, the student, you, you said the law states that you still have to provide a learning environment for those students.
We do, we do.
We, we have, uh, so, you know, the county provides the building for JJAP, we provide the teachers, the educational side, but we don't have a mechanism for expanding the physical plant of the place and expanding, um.
Right.
So, we, we have spoken with the county and we made that request because as Dr. Heinz mentioned, is all of our county school districts have grown, we haven't grown that capacity. So, that's a, that's an area that does need to be addressed, we need more seats there. Jay, our DAP, uh, that is something that we have control over, um, we don't have any space there, uh, but, but, you know, potentially, you know, could we bring in portables there? We could and if we were to consider, as we, as we are investigating the long-term DAP option, we would likely have to bring in some portables there to, um, to address that. Now, you know, we're, we're not finished yet with the work of the bond committee, but they did vote last week to include a refurbishment of the Washington campus in the bond, uh, plan. Uh, and so, if that were to pass, part of that rebuild of the Washington facility is we, we would specifically, you know, we could build and expand our JJAP in addition to having, you know, potential long-term room there. So, that, but that's, you know, that's still a down-the-road off, we can't wait for that. We have, we're gonna have to act before then, but some, at least it's something on the table for us.
Yeah. Glad, thank you.
One thing I'll add is that oftentimes it's more the case of getting a kid in DAP than JJAP for us. That, that's more of a common occurrence on a campus. And so, in my career, I've seen usually towards the end of a nine-week period, things tend to, that's when those things occur, you know? People, teachers, staff work with kids all the way through and by the end, things have built up. So, oftentimes what a campus does is you end up placing a student in and it was mentioned earlier, they add the OSS right away, then ISS, and you work on ISS in-school suspension until you can get the student into DAP. Um, we've also worked on where if a student is assigned for fifteen days of DAP for a non-violent offense, um, we have worked in where they have an opportunity to earn, to get back a little bit sooner for those students. Um, basically, they're doing what, taking care of their coursework there at DAP and so forth. They'll serve at least ten days of that fifteen. Um, those are some things we've done to make sure there's room. Also, we've had a long-term sub this year added in that was giving us an extra room for DAP and that is being replaced in the allocations. Thank you for a teacher for next year so that we won't have to use a sub there, so we have that option as well. So, um, of course, these are our reactive measures. I'm always looking for what can we do to keep our kids out of there. And I think another thing that's always of interest is when you look at the DAP, uh, students are going to DAP, the majority of the students, and I don't have the number, exact number, but I can tell you the majority of the students are not going back to DAP. So, and that's, that's the beauty of it. Um, and I, I would attribute that more to everything else we're doing on the campus from our staff versus a punishment measure.
Are they not going to DAP because there's no room?
No, that's not it.
They just don't want to return?
They, they, they have not, I don't know if they don't, I would hope they don't want to return, but I think most of it is a change in behavior.
So, maybe we need to get more space so they don't want to have to go there.
Yeah, and that's, that's where that allocation is coming in for us.
I'm gonna follow up with you with some questions later.
Okay, thank you.
Just one, one last question.
From you.
From me. From me, yes, fair enough. So, um, as I was preparing for this and I was doing a bit of research on, on it, I, I found like over and over again, some discussions about, um, uh, you know, discipline actions and expulsion seem to disproportionately affect, um, students of color. And so, I just want maybe just a really quick answer about, um, how we look in that kind of data and just some acknowledgement that we are also mindful of, of that statistic.
Absolutely, and you, you saw that was also on those indicators. And so, uh, we do monitor that. In general, we are disproportionate in our categories. Um, and I know, I know what I will say is, we, we do look better than the state in every category pretty much, except discretionary.
Yeah.
Uh, JJAP assignments, but the state's also very disproportionate. So, it's something that, that we are aware of and we do work on, um, and we do have data on that. It's produced by the state each, each year, there's a, a report, you know, we look at, um, how we're doing and, and ways to improve. So, I would say we're, we're, we're not where we wanna be and then sta- but statewide, to put it in context, we're at least looking better than the state averages, but we're still got ways to go, so.
Also for economically disadvantaged students.
Yeah, equal dis, special education is included in those disproportionate categories, Hispanic, African-American students. So, we are, we have disproportionate rates in all those areas and we do monitor that and we try to work on it, you know? And that's, goes back to that cultural awareness and really trying to help understand that our kids may not value the same thing or they may not think what I, what I'm doing meets their expectations and so, we have to be willing to kind of learn more about how, how do we understand our kids, where they are and meet them where they are.
Thank you.
There you go. You have thought, two quick things and I'll, I'll, I'll let you go. Um, I want to give you an opportunity to address a claim that was made, um, about restraining kids. So, does the district allow teachers, administrators to restrain kids when they have not been properly trained? And the second part of that is, is do we have a district policy not to tell parents when children are being restrained?
Well, I can answer that last one, we know we do not because we, we have to let them know we restrain their child.
Okay.
Um, restraints happen, um, and I don't know if I'm probably the best expert in the room to answer it, I'd say, Ken, right here, you wanna step up and help a little bit, but maybe she can at least tell me, she can at least tell me if I answered this wrong. But what I, what I, what I, what I remember about restraints is that, um, you do not have to be trained to administer a restraint because the situation may arise that there's a child that needs to be restrained and you gotta do what you gotta do. But we are required, if that happens, to be trained within a certain number of days, thirty, within thirty days. So, it does happen, you know, it could happen, teacher could be walking down a hall, not know a child, and a child could be doing something that requires for that child's safety to be restrained so they don't get hurt. Or that teacher just walked into a situation, they may have not been trained, they didn't, now they gotta be retrained.
If a child was, let's say they were jetting out the building and a teacher grabbed that child, is that considered a restraint and would that be, would that be something that we would?
There are legal restraints that we get trained on that are approved by the TEA and so, and they've just changed some of those laws and, um, but it's depending on the kid's safety. So, depending on the kid's age, what looks like, yes, if they're on one oh five and they're running out and they're six years old, someone might grab them so they don't run into the street, you know? So, there are different situations. The older they get, if they run off, you know, that might be for a different circumstance, but we always take the kid's safety into consideration and the safety of others.
Yes.
And every, every campus has a team of people that are trained. So, when they have the opportunity, they will call for that team to come in, the trained team, but in like the example that was just given, if you happen to be the teacher that's there and the child is running to the, the street, you intervene, like that's.
It, it also happens on the bus and we have to train bus drivers all the time because something will happen on a bus and they had to, you know, hold back a child and now we have to go train them.
Okay.
And part of that training also is a, a, a large part of the training, like seventy-five percent of the training has to do with verbal de-escalation. So, how do I enter a situation in order not to have to restrain? And really helps people understand what that would look like as you're walking in, the practice and scenarios and a lot of tips for verbal de-escalation.
Sure. Okay, so that, I was, I was a bit questioning that too, like, why do we then initiate training after someone has restrained without training? But, okay, I get it now because the training is mostly about how to not get into that scenario again, what are some tools, some tips, um, that you could use to de-escalate the situation? Okay, that, thank you for that piece of information.
The last thing I will say, um, and we move on to the next one unless someone else has something else, is, uh, it has a little bit to do with discipline, uh, but under this, this topic, I wanted to address, uh, Captain Blake Locke and your team for how y'all handled the Grand Oaks High School issue a couple of weeks ago. You did it professionally, you did it quietly, you did it without reason of getting everybody worked up and de-escalated it, like I said, quickly, response-wise, and I appreciate that and, and thank you for the way y'all, y'all handled that very professionally and did a great job. Thank you for what y'all did.
Yeah.
I just want to speak up and thank Ms. Earthman for taking my call today and answering, uh, several questions that I had and, and explaining what you're doing on the behavior side and as Dr. Heinz mentioned, that combined with what we're doing on the discipline side hopefully will lead to better results. So, I, I'm excited to hear more and I do have more questions, I'll reach out to you, but, um, I am hopeful about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item seven A, consider and approve the selection of constru- of a construction manager at risk for the new elementary intermediate school at the Woodlands feeder zone project and authorize a superintendent to negotiate and execute the construction management at-risk documents.
All right, we're gonna put Mr. Foster to work here for the next few items. Need a water, Mr. Foster?
I think I'm ready.
Okay.
I wanna. Good evening, President Hebert, members of the board and Dr. Noll, it's my pleasure to bring forth for your consideration and approval, the selection of a construction manager at risk for the new elementary intermediate school in the Woodlands feeder zone. This is a proposed project that would result from the proposed twenty-twenty-three bond referendum. Our obligation is for pre-construction services at this time, estimating constructability reviews, working with our architecture firm to make sure this new plan comes together and hits our budget targets and all of our programmatic needs. After a successful little action, then the district would be ready to move forward with bidding and the processes to bring forward a guaranteed maximum price to go into construction. Before construction were to be able to begin, that would be in front of you again for your approval of that guaranteed maximum price. Our board policy, CB Local, establishes construction manager risk as our, our default construction delivery method for projects of this size and magnitude, that's projects over one hundred thousand dollars. We do utilize a two-step process, which is a request for qualifications, which our architecture firm, IBI Group, and our purchasing department, uh, together worked, prepared and published our request for qualifications. We did receive, uh, nine responses, uh, on this project from their request for qualifications and state law limits us to no more than five to participate in step two. So, our committee reviewed the qualifications for those nine firms, uh, narrowed that list to the top five and then invited those five to participate in our step two, which is the pricing exercise for this project. Following review of the pricing and our step one scores, we're, uh, presenting Marshall Construction as the offerer who presents the best value for the district for this project. Uh, the ranking for the, all of the selections are in as part of your board item as well, but this time we're requesting your approval of the selection of Marshall Construction for this project.
All right, do we have a motion?
So.
You have a motion to be on second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion, questions?
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Foster, um, how often do we interview these companies, like personally? You sit down and talk with them?
Uh, that depends largely on the response, uh, to the, to the, uh.
Pricing?
Well, to the initial, uh, request for qualifications. In this instance, four of the five we know and trust very well have had experience with on many projects.
Yeah, they keep coming up over and over.
Correct. Uh, uh, when we looked at the pricing, uh, this one is not the lowest bidder, but it is the, uh, with other considerations on workload and things like that, is presented as the best value and it was a very small margin in, between the low bidder and the second bidder.
I'm glad that you pointed out that they weren't necessarily the lowest because that's not necessarily the most important, as you know, it's important money-wise, but because some, I was, I went back through, um, this thing, a lot, over a year and a half, and I'm noticing the change orders on multiple things. Do we ever do an analysis at the end of a project where the original bid was with change orders that have been added to, in comparison to the other bidders?
Well, so this is a construction manager at risk program, these, these, uh, these firms are competing on fees, not on total cost of construction. Uh, so in order to get a comparison like you're talking about, it would be a competitive bid environment where we had two identical projects we could compare with each other. Again, every one of our sites in honor was different, so that's, even if we had that situation, it'd be very difficult to get an apples, the apples comparison. But we do at the end of every project, uh, and before we bring it to you for the final payment, do a complete financial analysis of every charge on the, on the project. Uh, and that's one thing I like about construction manager at risk myself, is if I'm not happy with the charge, I hold the gold. I don't pay it. And if the contractor does not agree with my assessment, they do have the ability to justify the cost, uh, but we go through a large amount of conversation and documentation before we ever rank to you for that final payment.
I ju- I just meant that in the competition field, someone could say, "Well, I couldn't get that one, so we had to go with this one," or whatever. Then you have a change order, which then changes the price and in the end, one of the other bidders may have been able to get the items, so I was just curious.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, and it may just be semantics, uh, but the change orders you've processed as a board for our projects have been, uh, for almost one hundred percent is for our increase of the scope.
Our, okay, thank you, thank you.
Uh, when we bring in guaranteed maximum price to you for approval, that is, in my opinion, a guaranteed maximum price, uh, and there's got to be some very extenuating circumstances to bring me back in front of you to ask for more money, so.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, so you're done, call to vote. All those in favor of the motion show by the uplifted hand. Any opposed by the same sign? Motion carries, thank you. Next item is B, uh, consider and approve the selection of a construction manager at risk for the new seventh, eighth, ninth grade campus in the Grand Oaks High School feeder zone project and authorize a super. and authorize a superintendent to negotiate and execute the construction manager at-risk documents.
And if you will allow me, I will streamline this process because it's an identical process to the, to the item we just, just approved. But this is for the consideration of a construction manager risk for a seven, eight, nine campus in the Grand Oaks feeder zone. Uh, D L R Group is our architecture firm that you've assigned to this project. Uh, we had eight, uh, respondents to our request for qualifications. Uh, again, we had to narrow that down to five. Uh, this is the low bidder in that category. This is Ellisore Constructors, we're recommending to be selected as a construction manager risk for this project and we're requesting your approval.
Okay, do you have a motion?
So moved.
And a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor show by uplifted hand. Any opposed by the same sign? Motion carries. Item C, consider and approve the selection of a construction manager at risk for the new Conroe area high school project and authorize a superintendent to negotiate and execute the construction manager at-risk documents.
And again, in a streamlined fashion, this is a project you've assigned P B K Architects to. It is for the new high school, the construction manager risk for the new high school in the Conroe area, which will be on the site that is adjacent to Stockton Junior High on a piece of property we've owned and master planned for that high school many, many years ago. Again, we had, uh, a two-step process. This one, we had five companies respond to our first step of their request for qualifications. So we invited all five to give us pricing and the pricing exercise of step two after reviewing the qualifications and the pricing. Again, this is the low bidder for that category, but we're recommending George General Contractors to be the construction manager risk for this project and we're requesting your approval.
Motion?
So moved.
All right, perfect, how about a second?
Second.
All right, any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the vote show by uplifted hand. Any opposed by the same sign? Motion carries, thank you. All right, and then consider resolution authorizing exchange of real property located on and adjacent to the Snyder Elementary School site.
This is a new one, we don't do resolutions for property very often, uh, but this is a resolution for exchange of real property. So we had a landowner who's next door and adjacent to Snyder Elementary School approach us. Uh, says this was not our idea, this was something, uh, that we can help them with and they've offered something to help us as well. Uh, so it, it actually will be beneficial to the overall safety and, and, uh, security and traffic programs for around Snyder Elementary. But the landowner is B C S Burnham Woods L S E, they're a developer. They, uh, bought the property adjacent to Snyder Elementary and looked to develop a commercial development on that piece of property. Uh, we, the district, would convey two point four nine acres that is landlocked, so it's the back part of our site and Snyder has a, a large backyard. That area is utility easements already, so it works great for utility purposes for this developer. Uh, the, the developer would construct their detention facility on that piece of property. In turn, they're gonna give us point six nine acres and the construction of a new driveway extension, which helps us get traffic off of Burnham Woods Drive. Also, we've asked them to fence the entire backyard with the, with the six-foot privacy slats, uh, as part of the transaction as well. So the value of the land and the construction is roughly equal, so it's about five hundred and forty thousand dollars on, on both, both ends of the equation. The resolution, uh, request would allow Dr. Knoll to complete and, complete the negotiations, execute the documents to effectuate the transaction. Since it is a deed of real property in a resolution, uh, we will bring the deed back to the board. It must be signed by the board president in order to be, to, to finish the transfer. And there's many, many details, but we're looking to protect the Conroe I S D asset as best we can uh, before we will do any transfer, we'll make sure the construction is in place that we approve. Uh, and then they can build their detention after we get the, the, the value on our side. So it will be something we're looking to protect our instance on as well. We're requesting your, your authorization to, or the approval of the resolution so we can continue and, and complete this transaction. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
I did have one question. So the fencing will go and will completely, uh, go around the retention pond as well? So we, our, like our school, our students won't have any access or ability to get near that.
Correct, right, so the, the fencing that we've asked for the, the privacy slats will be to completely surround our backyard and prevent access to their, their facility.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
I have a quick question, is it retention or detention?
Oh, I imagine it's going to be a retention pond, but that's up to the county and designers and engineers. But generally speaking, the areas around, uh, Snyder Elementary have a retention pond, so they're dry most of the time. They retain rain for a little bit of time and then slowly drain it into the systems over a period of about twenty-four hours, but they're not meant to detain water all the time and be wet.
Fair enough. The fence maintenance, are we required to maintain the fence going along or is there a term in which they're required to maintain the fencing?
I mean, that's something we can go, negotiate with them, but I mean, uh, generally speaking, about two-thirds of that fence doesn't touch their detention pond. It touches our property where it is currently located. I mean, so I would imagine we would, you know, maintain that fence.
Fair enough, okay, thank you.
Is the location of the, sorry, I have a question, is the location of the driveway, is that what, is that of value to us?
Absolutely, so it is landlocked for, our land is landlocked from use, so it works great for their detention pond. Their land for us is landlocked from them, so it works great and it is immediately adjacent to our current driveway. So it's a really easy concrete extension.
And they're paying for it?
Yes, ma'am, that, that makes the value equal.
Well, we're trading them.
Yeah.
Yes.
Sorry, but they're paying for the concrete. See, we're trading land, but they're also going to put that driveway in, which is huge.
Yes, ma'am.
My quick question is, uh, as far as the height of the fence, I know we've been talking about new regulations, will this new, will the fence meet the regulations moving forward for?
Yeah, everything that I've seen from the T E A, it would meet the minimum requirements for a six-foot high fence to be non-climbable. Uh, it's also got privacy, you know, so it's not immediately see-through either, so.
You know, keep all soccer balls on our side of the fence.
Well, I can kick higher than that fence, but we shall see. We're not gonna let you play on that playground.
All right, very good.
Mr. Foster, real quick, do you know the, the length of the driveway that they're putting in, by chance?
Um, it works out to about, mm, I'm recalling from memory, that's the one dimension I didn't gather up today. It's about five hundred feet long, but it is a full lane width, uh, so when you would, just kind of describe what it looks like, it comes into the normal Snyder driveway, you would drive, uh, a long parallel of Burnham Woods Drive onto their property, hang a left turn, uh, makes it kind of a cul-de-sac, uh, about two-thirds of our entire property where it currently is, and then it would come back and make the right turn back towards the front door.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, very good. All those in favor of the motion show by the uplifted hand. Any opposed by the same sign? Motion carries, Mr. Foster. You are done, no you're not. Receiving capital and revenue update, we just, pictures now.
Indeed, well, I, I do want to take this opportunity to kind of bring you up to speed over what's going on throughout the district. We're beginning with our safety and security, uh, project, this is a twenty nineteen bond referendum, district-wide effort. This is the final installment, it is proceeding just like we had hoped it would. Uh, so the, the teams are working in several schools, uh, over nights and weekends, doing the things above the ceilings, wiring cameras, getting things ready for the new installations. Uh, we'll be working through them again through the summer. Uh, this project lasts all the way through, uh, the end of the calendar year twenty twenty-four, but it is currently on schedule and doing exactly as we had hoped. Uh, now our new campuses, the Morehead Junior High School is on schedule and we're gonna open it for students in August of twenty twenty-three. Uh, that project is moving along swimmingly, uh, we're looking to take possession of it this summer, move furniture in, uh, and move the, all the stuff from the current Morehead into the new Morehead. Uh, it is going well. At Hines Elementary School behind Grand Oaks, uh, that school is also on schedule, looking to finish it up, uh, at the end of May and take possession of it in the summer and open for students, uh, in August of twenty twenty-three as well. Bartlett Elementary, which we've recently broken ground on, so you can see the building, that is nearly done. Uh, foundations are underway, it is on schedule and scheduled to open in August of twenty twenty-four. Now our renovation projects, Connor High School, the major renovations there, uh, you're looking at picture there on your screen of the new C T E, uh, section of the building, uh, it is wrapping up nicely, but we'll be on that campus through December of twenty twenty-five. Uh, Oak Ridge High School, that overhaul in South County C T E programs, uh, that project is moving along nicely as well and will open for students in August of twenty twenty-three, uh, it is on schedule. Likewise, at King Creek High School, our six A upgrades, uh, you can see the interior, that, that, uh, the expansion of those additions on that building are moving along nicely as well and they're scheduled to open for students in August of twenty twenty-three, uh, again, on schedule. Now Collins Intermediate, we've done the gym, now we're waiting for the summer. Uh, when the students, uh, leave for the summer break, I will move in and start overhauling the air conditioning system. Uh, that is on schedule, looks to be complete when students return from the summer break in twenty, August of twenty-three. Likewise, at Giesinger Elementary School, our chemistry renovations twenty-three project, again, an air conditioning overhaul, we've been preparing that campus when the students leave after, uh, for the summer break and we'll go to work and we'll get that back on and ready for the students when they return from summer in August of twenty-three. And at Veterans Memorial, we're looking to rebrand that campus. As soon as the new Morehead is open, we're gonna begin, uh, the process of moving old Morehead to new Morehead, starting that rebrand and then also we're adding some driveway space there to help get the queuing, uh, off of F M fourteen eighty-five and more of it onto our property, help the traffic in that neighborhood. Again, that is scheduled to be complete in August of twenty twenty-three, it is on schedule. For our auxiliary facilities, our new maintenance and child nutrition building is also, uh, moving along nicely. It is scheduled to be complete and for our use in June of this summer. Uh, East County Transportation, they're pouring paving, getting much, uh, progress done on getting that, uh, the new parking spots for our East County Transportation fleet. Uh, again, that project is moving along nicely, uh, and is scheduled to be complete in December of twenty-three. Likewise, in North County, that transportation center, uh, we've done demo on the existing buildings, working on getting that, the new configuration, the shops together. Uh, the site work is, uh, nearing done, they're working with the city to relocate some utilities now and then that project is scheduled to be complete in December of twenty twenty-three as well. And that's our update.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Good job, sir.
Thank you. All right, item eight, a consider approval of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four employee group health plan. Mr. Rice.
Yes, good evening, President Hubert, members, uh, members of the board and Dr. Knoll. Tonight, we're requesting the board to approve the employee medical coverage rates and plan design for the self-funded health insurance program as discussed in our board workshop on April fourth and as recommended by the employee benefits committee. The district's self-funded group health insurance program is designed to provide the district's employees with a quality health plan at a reasonable cost. The district's current plan design administered by Blue Cross Blue Shield is performing well and in addition to the change, uh, to Blue Cross Blue Shield as the district's pharmacy benefits manager, the district can provide its employees the same level of benefits that we had in twenty-two and twenty-three without an increase in premiums. This is truly exciting because in the past years, health insurance, health insurance premium increases would consume a large percentage of any raise an employee would receive. Medical plan networks offered by Blue Cross Blue Shield include the Blue Premier, Blue Essentials and Blue Choice Networks. C I S D believes its benefit plans will continue to be offered at competitive rates as compared with our peer districts and T R S. The total projected health plan cost will be fifty-three million dollars with C I S D funding sixty percent of the health plan cost and employee premiums funding the remaining forty percent. At this time, I recommend your approval.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
A second, Ms. Duncan, any questions?
And this is what we had talked about before, like.
Yes.
All right.
And again, our advisor only receives fees from their advice, but not any other things associated.
Correct.
Thank you.
All those in favor of the motion show by uplifted hand. Any opposed by the same sign? Very good, motion carries, thank you. And then receiving our financial, uh, report from Ms. Garza.
Good evening, President Hubert, members of the board and Dr. Knoll. It is my pleasure to provide a financial update for the month ended March thirty-first. First statement is the balance sheet. Presented here is the general fund, the debt service fund, child nutrition and self-funded insurance. Total assets in the general fund, four hundred and twenty-four million. Debt service, sixty point seven million, child nutrition, seventeen million, self-funded insurance, eight point eight million. Second statement is our income statement, this shows the revenues and expenditures. Total revenue in the general fund year-to-date, five hundred and twenty-nine point seven million. Total expenditures, three hundred and twenty-five point eight million. Our two thousand nineteen bond referendum update, estimated to complete just over fifty-four million dollars. Our self-funded insurance plan, um, we are in a really good position moving into the summer months. Total revenue for the year, thirty-one million, total expenses, twenty-eight point four. So we are moving into the summer with a surplus of about two point six million. As we know, summer months are more taxing on the plan, so we're very optimistic moving into the summer with how the plan is performing so far year-to-date. Our investments as of March thirty-first, total par value is seventy-four, seven hundred and forty-eight point four million. The pools are at four point eight five, our combined portfolio is yielding four point six two. And for the first time in fourteen months, we can say that our portfolio is yielding above the, the benchmark by four basis points, that which is at four point five eight.
Thank you, Ms. Garza, any questions from Ms. President? All right. Before we go into item nine legal, I would like to allow us to have a five-minute violation. When I say five minutes, if that's okay, we could be a hard five-minute. I know we love, we love to talk, but if we could make that five minutes.
You can have Sarah put the timer up.
In session, we almost made it. Okay, uh, item nine A, consider revision of board policy, B V B Board members' election. Any questions?
Yes, so this now reflects what was under the school board elections tab on our website, it correlates?
Yes, it, yes, but we have the correct terminology related to that.
Okay, so did you all, uh, I first want to say thank you. When Ms. Duncan asked you to remove the updates out of consent agenda.
Sure.
Um, I appreciated that because that made me pay even more attention because it was going to be, um, I, I felt like it was more important. So anyway, that being said, um, I'm curious to know, did it affect any elections? Okay. Oh, I, I, but the fact that they were two different things, do you all know what I'm talking about? So, um, our policy of what was on our website, legal, did not match how we run our election. And it had been that way since twenty sixteen. Had that happened by accident and been approved like it was, we, we would have consent agenda'd it again in this, this time. So that's why it was so important that we pay attention to it. Also, had it happened in twenty fourteen, which is irrelevant, Mr. Hubert wouldn't have made it. So, and look how long you've been able to serve and that, that's a big deal that we pay attention to those things. So that's the only reason why I wanted to address it. Anyway. I'm done.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on, item, item B, I'll turn this over to, to Dr. Knoll.
All right, well, I will, um, I will serve as a presiding officer as we move into this item. That will allow, uh, President Hubert to, um, serve as, as, uh, just a committee member here as, as you all work through this item. Item nine B on the agenda is for the board to consider an appeal brought by Dr. Alex Harris. Dr. Harris is appealing the decision of the reconsideration committee relating to the inclusion of Ramona Blue by Julie Murphy in the district's high school library collections. For the record, all board members are present and have received exhibits one through six, as have Dr. Harris and Dr. Lambert, who is representing the administration in this hearing. These documents will be part of the record of this hearing. On November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, Dr. Harris submitted a request for reconsideration of the novel Ramona Blue. Dr. Harris requested that the novel be removed from district libraries stating in his complaint that the main character, Ramona, quote, sleeps around, identifies as a lesbian and is a minor who has multiple sexual encounters, end quote. Dr. Harris also provided nineteen pages of quotes from the novel that he found objectionable. In accordance with local board policy E F B, the district appointed a reconsideration committee to, to review the novel and determine if the novel meets the board's selection criteria for library books and other policy requirements. The committee's written report details their decision, which was that Ramona Blue did meet the. meet the district's library book selection criteria and would remain in the collections of high school libraries. The committee instructed any junior high school with the novel in its collection to send the novel to the high school in that feeder zone. Dr. Harris appealed the committee's decision, stating that the committee, quote, "completely missed the fact that Ramona was discovering her sexual orientation through multiple sexual encounters," end quote, and that the novel, quote, "stirs the prurient interest in sex," end quote, violating the Texas Education Code, Section twenty-eight dot zero-zero-four, which promotes, quote, "the standard of abstinence from sexual, sexual activity before marriage," end quote. Texas Education Code, Section twenty-eight dot zero-zero-four, is the state law that establishes the school health advisory councils. Dr. Jared Lambert, the district's Director of Information Services, served as the Level Two Hearing Officer for the appeal. Dr. Lambert determined that the novel met the selection criteria set out in Board Policy EFB and did not contain material appealing to the prurient interests of students. Accordingly, Dr. Lambert upheld the decision of the reconsideration committee. Dr. Harris then appealed to the Board of Trustees. The issue before the trust, the issue before the Board of Trustees is to determine if Ramona Blue meets the selection criteria set out in Board Policy EFB and should remain in the district, district's high school libraries. The board must base its decision on the evidence contained in the exhibits and the statements made by the parties. Members of the board, please indicate by raising your hand if you have reviewed the record in its entirety, including reading or listening to the novel that is subject of tonight's hearing in its entirety. Okay? Let the record show that all members of the board did raise their hand. I will now ask each member of the board whether he or she is able to serve as an impartial member of the board in this reconsideration of Dr. Harris's appeal. Any member not able to serve in such a manner may say so and ask to be excused. Mrs. Chase?
I am.
Mrs. Odenweller?
I am.
Mrs. Wagaman?
Yes.
Mr. Hubert?
I am.
Mrs. Nelson?
I am.
Mr. Williams?
I am.
And Mrs. Duncan?
I am.
Thank you. Because Dr. Harris appealed the reconsideration committee's decision, he is the appellant and will present his argument first, followed by Dr. Lambert. Each will have ten minutes to make their presentation. This is not an evidentiary hearing, and there will be no cross-examination of witnesses, and neither party can reserve time. Mrs. Godfrey will serve as our timekeeper. All comments must be made from the podium tonight so that we can make sure that the microphone is able to pick those up. At the conclusion of each presentation, we'll go to the board. I'll make sure to give you all ample time to ask any questions that you would have. At the conclusion of questions, then we will shift into your discussion mode, make sure that all of you have opportunity to have ample discussions, and then we will be seeking motions to bring conclusion to the hearing. Dr. Harris, any questions?
So I have exhibits, may I just connect them?
You cannot bring any new exhibits in today. Only exhibits that have already been submitted, for the record, are the record.
I was basically covering what I was doing, but it was my con.
No, that's not, that's not part of the record.
Yeah, you can only, only items that are already in the record. So you're welcome to speak, you know, speak about, yes, absolutely, sir. Yes. So, Dr. Lambert, any questions for you? Okay. Dr. Harris, you're welcome to proceed, and you'll have ten minutes.
That's a surprise because I had quite a bit of material prepared, but we will abide by the law. So, good evening, board. I want to show today that Ramona Blue must be removed from the CIST library since it's part of the National Sexuality Education Standard Strategy. This case also will reveal why we are facing the issue of inappropriate books for minors in our library, since our librarians, under Dr. Lambert, leadership is totally oblivious to NSCS and its influence and its curriculum and our library material. I wish I could send it. I give you the material, but I'll send it later, which is unofficial. And this is, so my first exhibit, which was basically Dr. Lambert's statement, he said there are no description of ultimate sex acts. That's one of the quotes in his report. And I ask you to look at pages two-seventy-six to two-eighty-one, which you have a copy, you read it, and I have this, but I can't give it to you, but you have a copy of the book, and you can read it. The second thing is, when I spoke to Dr. Lambert, I think that the whole issue of the effect of teenage sex, he had kind of like a rhetorical aspect in his denial report, and I have an article which talks about the effects of teenage sex. It's a meaningless relationship, it never lasts, and the emotional impact, and that is carried through what you see in this book. The third thing that I wanted to talk, he said, and this is the heart of what I want to present tonight, that Dr. Lambert said he does not find how twenty-eight zero-zero-four, Texas Education Code relates to this book and to the library book. And he says, nor do I find the National Sex Education Standard as developed by CICUS to be germane to this review. And I think this is what really shocked me because Dr. Lambert, who oversees the librarians, thinks that twenty-eight zero-zero-four is not relevant, it's like a siloed vision, it's only in the shack, it's only in curriculum, that we can have an environment which can have other materials which are affecting the children. The second thing is, the root cause I feel is what we're facing today is because the librarians are not aware of NSCS, and I want to spend some time on that, and hopefully I won't run out of time, I thought I could give it to you. Back in, back in December last year, I pointed out to the board, I pointed out to the Shack Committee that our material is very weak in complying with twenty-eight zero-zero-four, and of course, I got a very positive response, and that you're working on that material to correct it so that abstinence is promoted beyond other things that are promoted. Then, you know, when I realized that you were using Goodheart Wilcox, it had one of the chapters in it, and I highlighted it, and I said, look, it has gender identity, and this is one of the lessons in this textbook, and it's part of NSCS. But you were very good, you said, look, you have pointed it out, we will remove it, we will not teach it. So you took that out, which is very positive in your favor. Now, to, Dr. Lambert saying that NSCS is not relevant and is not anything to be worried about, this is a document which I will send to you later for your own education, and it may not be relevant to this. This is from Goodheart Wilcox's website, and within it, what they say is, hey, we want to tell you how aligned we are with NSCS. That's their boast. They have a material which is fully developed, which is fully aligned with NSCS. Now, NSCS, I think, a little bit unfortunately, since I can't give you this material, is, it is, I have to go back. I have to go back and review that. It says by grade five. I'm sorry, I didn't realize I couldn't give this to you. I'll take my time. It says, yes, here it is. It says, I found it, by grade five, make sure the children understand hormone blockers. And you know why they're saying that? And by grade ten, they should be able to differentiate between sex assigned at birth, gender identity, and gender expression. And then they should be able to differentiate between sexual orientation and sexual behavior. That's what this book is all about. Here is Ramona Blue, trying to figure out, am I straight? Am I a lesbian? What am I? How do I figure that out? By sleeping around. That's the message of this book, which is aligned with NSCS. And that's the part of the problem because why, earlier, you know, we've had discussions with librarians, and they feel everything is okay, because they don't understand NSCS. And this is a move, this is a dark force that is operating in our nation, that is coming to indoctrinate our children, to make them desensitized to sex. And that's the force we are battling. And NSCS is so vital that you understand, because everything that you see happening and we are contending with, it's there in NSCS. That's the agenda, and that's what is wrong with this book. Now, here's the thing. Talking about social values, because when you talk about the law, it boils down to this. What is our prevailing standards in our community? That's what it boils down to. Now, Dr. Lambert, when he looked at the book, he said, look, he said, this does have social value, does have social value for minors. Yes, Ramona Blue was in a very poverty-stricken environment, she struggled, she tried to help her sister, and so on and so forth. But what is the real message? That is reactive. When you get into that mode, you're reactive. What is the proactive mode? The proactive mode, if you are in that situation? We have excellent standards at Conroe. If you look at the current, that man was talking to SBOE, what's wrong with our standards? No, it's excellent. In maths, in science, it's excellent. In English, you name it. But what does it take to take advantage of that? You've got to be focused, you've got to work hard. You don't work hard, and you have all of this distracting you, you will not be able to make it. When I went to school, hey, the standards are very difficult. The world has advanced so much, and what do we do? We take all of that, we bring it down to the high school level and say, look, children need to know these things. The standards that I had to face was much lower, because the world was not this advanced. You're forcing calculus, you're forcing advanced algebra. It takes, you know, if I had to go through that book, it takes me time to say, wow, look at that. But it lays the foundation, and that's the point. The point here is that message is not there. The message is, hey, you've got to figure out your sexual identity, you've got to figure out your orientation. That's what it is. There's no consequence. You've lost out everything. The whole education system has, you've missed it. And hopefully, you know, it says in the end, oh, she could swim, and she was able to go to college based on that. You think sports is the answer? You know, when I was at SBOE, I know you have a lot of specialized courses of children who don't make it academically. A couple of parents stood there, and they vehemently objected to it. They said, children need to know how to read, they need to know how to write, they need to know how to communicate, the fundamental skills. Focus on that, because otherwise, the rest of their life, they're not able to do. And I agree, I didn't think of it that way. So I encourage you, we have to purge such things which are aligned, this is completely aligned with NSCS, and we have to purge stuff right from the beginning.
Thank you, sir.
And here. A little differently than what I planned.
That was very, that was a very dramatic time, yeah, thank you. All right.
Okay. Sarah.
Dramatic effect.
All right, Dr. Lambert, you may proceed, you'll have ten minutes, sir.
Okay, thank you. President Hubert, members of the Board of Trustees, and Dr. Knoll, thank you for allowing me to present the Level Two decision related to Ramona Blue by Julie Murphy and to respond to Dr. Harris's appeal of that decision. I want to state first that I understand that the libraries we are talking about tonight are school libraries, and I suggest that the discussion tonight is not about the ability of the district to manage library collections. Tonight's decision is about one book. It is about the appropriateness of removing Ramona Blue from the district's high school libraries. I submit that removal in this case is inappropriate. I come to this decision as a Texan of forty-seven years, an educator of twenty-five years, and a parent of sixteen years. While I wholeheartedly disagree with Dr. Harris's understanding of the book, his interpretation of state law, I do not question the sincerity of his beliefs. Those beliefs in this instance, I believe, are contrary to the best interests of students and our community. In his claims regarding the harmfulness of the text in our Level Two conference, Dr. Harris indicated that harm is caused by neglect of academic studies as a result of focusing on thoughts of sex, sexual orientation and relationships. This standard for harmful material is inconsistent with the standard set out in Texas Penal Code, Section forty-three point two-four A two, which Dr. Harris references as the reason for his initial request for reconsideration. In his appeal of the decision at Level Two to maintain Ramona Blue as self-selected reading in the district's high school libraries, Dr. Harris does not reference any previous claims. Rather, he asserts that my not having heard of the National Sex Education Standards developed by a private organization makes a portion of my decision meaningless. Dr. Harris further state, further questions my statement that those standards are not part of the district's health curriculum. It remains my opinion that the CICA standards are not germane to the analysis and decision here. Even though Dr. Harris's appeal of the Level Two decision does not reference any of the issues raised at our initial conference, I will present the three issues that he raised in that meeting. First, he asserted that Ramona Blue constituted harmful material as defined by Texas Penal Code, Section forty-three point two-four A two. Second, Dr. Harris indicated that he believed the reconsideration committee report did not take into account community standards. Dr. Harris linked community standards to Texas Education Code, Section twenty-eight point zero-zero-four, and to the promulgation of the National Sex Education Standards by a non-governmental organization known as CICUS. Finally, Dr. Harris indicated that the committee did not understand or misapplied the Supreme Court decision in Miller v. California, which Dr. Harris believes removes from consideration the standard of utterly without redeeming social value. As relates to Dr. Harris's first raised issue at the Level Two conference, harmful material as defined by the Texas Penal Code must have three elements. It must appeal to prurient interest of a minor in sex, nudity, or excretion. Further, it must be patently offensive to prevailing social standards in the adult community as a whole with respect to what is suitable for minors. And it must be utterly without redeeming social value for minors. To meet the statutory standard, the standard included in Board Policy EFB, the material must meet all three elements. It is my determination and that of the reconsideration committee that Ramona Blue by Julie Murphy does not meet any of the three standards for harmful material. Even if I were to grant the first two elements, which I do not, but even if I were to grant them, the book has significant redeeming social value for minors, including many in this district. Regarding the question of Texas Education Code, Section twenty-eight point zero-zero-four and CICUS's sex education standards, neither apply to self-selected library books. The section of the Texas Education Code relates to the School Health Advisory Council. As mentioned in my Level Two report, the National Sex Education Standards are not endorsed by any state or federal Department of Education. They are not part of the health curriculum required in Texas. In recent communication with the board and district administration and this Level Three appeal, Dr. Harris indicated that the publisher of the health textbook, approved by the State Board of Education, references the CICA standards on its website for the book. In the Texas edition of that book, all human sexuality content is removed from the main text and is included in a companion text. That companion text is not used in Conroe ISD. Having said that, it remains my opinion that neither Texas Education Code, Section twenty-eight point zero-zero-four, nor CICUS's National Sex Education Standards are germane to the decision-making related to Ramona Blue. In his final issue at the Level Two conference, Dr. Harris referenced Miller v. California and its possible misapplication by the reconsideration committee. I have since read the decision in Miller v. California. I am neither a lawyer nor do I play one on TV, so I will not speak to the applicability of the court's decision in this instance. For our purposes, I take Dr. Harris's assertions at face value. Even so, nothing in Miller v. California prohibits states from using the standard by which works must be utterly without redeeming social value to be considered harmful. This is the standard Texas has chosen to apply in the penal code, and this board has adopted. This is the standard Texas has chosen to apply in the penal code, and this board has adopted through Policy EFB. In reviewing all the material related to Dr. Harris's request for reconsideration of Ramona Blue by Julie Murphy, and subsequent appeals, it is my opinion that the reconsideration committee was correct in its decision. I do not find the work to be obscene or harmful material as those terms are defined in the Texas Penal Code. In addition, I do not believe CICA standards or Texas Education twenty-eight point zero-zero four apply to the review of self-selected library books. Finally, even if controlling, I do not believe Miller v. California changes any of the analysis related to this appeal. As I conclude my presentation, I offer this characterization of Ramona Blue as a whole. It is substantially different from what Dr. Harris has offered. Ramona Blue is a story of struggle, survival, and hope. Ramona and the other characters have to determine their responsibilities to their families, their options for the future, and their possibilities for college. At the end of the story of struggle and tragedy, we are left with a message of hope and possibility. That message is beautifully encapsulated in the blessing offered for the fishing fleet at the end of the book. It is a message Ramona has heard so often, she knows it by heart. At the end of Ramona Blue, she hears the blessing as hers, and it speaks to her future. Here are the words Ramona hears at the end of the novel. "Most gracious Lord, who numbered among your apostles the fishermen Peter, Andrew, James, and John, we pray you to consecrate this boat to righteous work in your name. Guide the captain at her helm, so prosper her voyages that an honest living may be made. Watch over her passengers and crew and bring them to a safe return. And the blessing of Almighty God, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit be upon this vessel and all who come aboard this day and forever. Amen." It is my recommendation that the board uphold the decision of the reconsideration committee related to Ramona Blue by Julie Murphy, and allow copies of the book to remain in high school libraries as self-selected reading material. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lambert. At this time, we'll move to an opportunity for board members to ask questions of either party. I would just remind you both that as you have an opportunity to answer questions, if you'll do so from the podium, just so that the mic... So just if you'll wait, do we have any questions from any board members? Okay. All right, we're hearing no questions. If the board chooses, it can now discuss the matter, because this hearing is held in open session. If during the discussion, any board member should need to obtain legal advice, the board can adjourn to closed session under Texas Government Code, Section five-five-one dot zero-seven-one, obtain legal advice, and then return to open session to make its decision. Is there any discussion at this time? Go ahead.
I did find some positive aspects of Ramona Blue. The overcoming of poverty, the the fact that she had her mother leave, and it was a limited relationship, that she had an incredibly strong family tie together, strength that she drew on, her responsibility, how hard she worked to help just cover the expenses. Her dad was loving, but was limited in what he could give back to the family. They were in extreme poverty. I would say extreme poverty. The sister is pregnant out of wedlock. And yet, a message there was that they would rally and keep the baby, and that's a big deal. However, there was teen alcohol use, promiscuity, gender identity and fluidity issues, conflict within her day-to-day of where she stood gender as what... She knew she was a girl, but she had conflict with who she was attracted with sexually. Those are complex content that a parent should have a right to know about. And based on our policy, a parent wouldn't be made aware of their child checking this book out. So that gave me cause for concern. It's a mature content. And for those reasons, I struggled with this book.
Thank you, Ms. Oldwall. Any other comments?
I got a few comments as well. So a couple of things, when I went back and listened to the recording of the hearing that y'all had together, talking about the... Mr. Harris said, "Texas Penal Code forty-three point two-three and forty-three point two-four" about the obscenity and harmful material. During that, Dr. Harris then came back and said, "The book's obscenity is kind of moderate." Okay, so it's there, you said it was there. He said, "Not portrayed in a graphic way." So you're agreeing in your statements that it doesn't break it because it's moderate, and it's not even graphic in nature. So I wanted to point that out. And also, there was a rating system that you had recognized as well, I think it was called Bookworks. And the Bookworks had rated this book as a Level Three out of five. I was not familiar with that. I'm assuming that the Bookworks, very similar to, you know, the ratings of movies are suggestions, and not necessarily something that has to be, you know, whenever you have ratings of movies, there are suggestions, you know, there's PG, PG thirteen, R, G, NC seventeen. Those are suggestions letting parents know the content. And then, obviously, the parents can choose what they're going to do with those ratings. And so, with it being at a Level Three, it tells me it's not a four or a five, so it's not heavy. And, you know, it may have some adult content, and the fact that it's a self-selected reading material, to me, it just doesn't seem to to break any of these regulations. The forty-three point two-four, forty-three point two-one, and in your own words, it doesn't really break anything. It came down to the fact that it's harmful because it discusses and explores Ramona's sexuality, which makes her unable to focus on education. Those were the quotes that I got out of that. And I believe that she ends up going to a junior college. And the swimming that she was enacted in, she wasn't really looking for scholarship money or anything like that, but there was somebody who was trying to help her get out of that mindset of, "This is my life, I'm going to live and die in this small little town." And breaking up with boyfriends, and breaking up with girlfriends, because they're going off and I'm staying here. And there was somebody that was brave enough to use swimming as an avenue to make her think you could use your swimming and get out of this scenario. I thought that was a beautiful thing, to be honest with you, that someone was, saw, and heard that she could be bigger than what she thought she was. And so, I thought that was part of the story, and was a great story, because we have tons of students in our schools that are in that same scenario. We still have, in our district, first-time high school graduates. First-time high school graduates, what a great story for them to be able to relate to. And the fact that, you know, she's, you know, if she's gay or straight, you know, that took such a backstage, especially because the discussion of any kind of sex was not graphic, and it was very, very moderate. And I think another quote was, he said, "You know it's happening, you know it was there, but it just wasn't, it wasn't drilled upon, it wasn't part of that." So, and then the teen pregnancy and the situation she had with her sister. Her sister was going to stay with a guy because she wanted a family unit. And she was looking past the guy's inequality, or not equality, but it's just all of the flaws that the guy had, because she wanted something different. I just, and then the dealing with Hurricane Katrina, and the poverty and everything, and a tornado during prom, I mean, there were just so many things that happened. I saw just a tremendous amount of redeeming qualities. And like I said, in your own words, it doesn't, the obscenity was moderate and not portrayed in a graphic way. So those are the things that I lean on as well. And the fact that the rating of the book, it's just a suggestion, just like the, you know, we leave it up to families to choose if they're going to let their kids watch rated R or PG or PG thirteen. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Chase, or you... Or, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Nelson, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank you both for presenting today. In reading the book, I found myself relating to Ramona's character for many reasons, not all of them, but as far as growing up the way she did. The biggest problem that I have with it is just, and you know, I heard you say that there's the struggle, the survival, and the hope. I think there are a lot of other ways that we can show struggle, survival, and hope. But it's just the things in between that concern me, like the condoning of multiple sex partners for underage minors. As a parent, I have four high schoolers and two junior high schoolers. I'm not a big fan of my children reading books like that. And then, there was underage, or there was drinking while the mom was pregnant, so, and it really, it was sort of condoning that behavior. And I'm not a fan of that personally, so that's really where I'm at an impasse, so, thank you both.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Ms. Chase?
Yeah, so, Dr. Harris, thanks. Like, you're, you seem like a nice guy, and like, obviously, very smart guy. And I thought, you know, I listened to the hearing, and you were very complimentary of the reconsideration committee. And I understand this is the third book you've challenged, and, you know, you've been complimentary of the process and the people working into it. So I just want to thank you for that attitude there. I I also found a lot of redeeming quality in this book. Honestly, quite enjoyed reading this book for many reasons. And I think the multiple partners thing, I think that's maybe a little bit of a mischaracterization, right? She had a girlfriend, and then she had a boyfriend, and they were at different times. But I think we heard, we heard many public comments around the value of the representation in this book from an ego death standpoint, from an LGBTQ standpoint. And I think that is, that is great. But I also think, like, part of the beauty of reading these books is the chance to experience a life that is not your own. And those build empathy and compassion, right? And they, they build the whole, the whole person. And I just, I just think there's so much there to recommend for that kind of, that kind of value of experiencing a life that is not your own. So I struggle a little bit, Dr. Harris, because you haven't really given us anything new to consider. And in the hearing yourself, you mentioned that, as Trustee Hubert pointed out, that the sex was moderate. And I think I wrote down, you said, "It's not blatant, and is done, and not in overly sexual manner." So I struggle a little bit with no new evidence to really change, change my opinion, right?
Thank you, Ms. Chase. Ms. Wagner?
I just want to quickly piggyback on some of the comments that we've already made in regards to, in no way does this book actually or necessarily make the reader want to live that life. I just didn't, I saw a story. I saw myself as the reader, then looking at it as, "That is not how I would necessarily want to proceed with my life." And I would have to guess that there are students that have read this book who might also have those same feelings. I don't think it necessarily makes somebody want to do something, especially the sexual intercourse part. I just don't see how this book is making someone do anything negative. Yes, it's a story, it's something to review, it's something to ponder, but it doesn't necessarily make you immediately go out and behave that way. I have to, I have to agree with the comments that there were very, there were so many positive things about family, about taking care of a baby outside of wedlock. Especially when we look in the news right now where it's quite the opposite. That if something like that would have happened, then, you know, you run down to the local place and take care of things. But that's not what this book was advocating for. There was so much, there were so many things that were positive that would make people think, again, not only bring empathy forward, but make people think about, "Maybe how I don't want to live." And so, again, I thank you, like everyone else did, for your very, your very kind, positive responses. And I appreciate you bringing your concerns forward, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner. Any other comments?
Yes.
Ms. Duncan, go ahead.
I'll second what Ms. Wagner is saying, that even though the content in the book isn't something that I would relate to personally, I was able to see past it, into the good of the story and, you know, the unwed mother. The positive message that that does send is overwhelmingly more than the negative. The unrelatable topics in the book. So because of that, I can't see any justification for it coming off the shelves.
Thank you, Ms. Duncan. Any other comments?
I'll just say a few comments. I struggle when we're doing these assessments, evaluations of books, to where we have characters participating in different activities, and that's considered or synonymous with condoning. I just can't see how we're making that connection. I think that's a reach by any definition of reach. I participate, partake in things that my kids see me partaking in, but does that mean I'm condoning it for them? Not at all. They understand it, they're old enough, they're age where they understand that. I won't get into details on that. But when we go with books and we talk about these literary arts, they're for various types of folk, various demographics. Who are we to be judgmental of that person's struggle, that person's path? They're all different. They're designed to invoke discussion, to invoke some sense of compassion, empathy for the readers. And I think that book did just this. But let's hit the negatives. You know, there's negatives in every book we read, right? These books aren't spiritual guides, you know? The very spiritual guide we go to, right, is riddled with obscenities. But that's neither here nor there. So understand that when we're evaluating these books and expecting these books to be all wholesome, and, you know, and Dr. Seuss didn't write all the books in the library. It just didn't happen. And even some of the, if you look close enough, some of the stuff that he wrote was extremely obscene and offensive to this day. So be careful when we continue to bring these books for objection, appeal, or to be removed from our books, removed from our bookshelves. How far are we going to take this thing? So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Just want to make sure that everybody's had an opportunity to say all your...
I'd like to reinforce some last words.
If we could, so the parties have completed their presentations, and the discussion has concluded. It's now time that the board makes its decision regarding whether Ramona Blue will remain in Conroe Independent School District High School Libraries. The board can choose to uphold the decision of the reconsideration committee. It can order any other relief the board believes is appropriate. If the board chooses to take no action at all, then the committee's decision will be upheld. Is there a motion?
I'd make a motion that we uphold the reconsideration committee's decision.
Okay, so we have a motion to uphold the decision. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
So we have a motion in a second. So just to be clear here, we have a motion on the floor to uphold the decision of the reconsideration committee. That's been... We have a motion in a second. It is now time to vote on that motion. All in favor of that motion to uphold the reconsideration committee's decision, please raise your hand. Okay? And those opposed? Okay. The Board has upheld the motion to uphold the reconsideration committee's decision by a vote of five to two. Dr. Harris, you will receive written notice of the Board's action. The district thanks both of you for your attendance today and participation in the hearing. The hearing is now concluded. I will turn the meeting back over to President Hubert to move us to the next item.
All right. Our next item of business is executive session, which we do have executive session today. Give me a chance to get there. All right, the Board will go into closed session pursuant to Sections 551.071, 072, 074, 076, and all the way to 551.089 of the Texas Open Meeting Act. Any action, vote, or decision of the Board with regard to any matters discussed in closed session will be made when the Board returns to open session. The time is 10:30. We are back in open session. The time is 11:14. Looking at Item 11, action on executive session. We have no action coming out of executive session. Item 12, take requests, trustees regarding future board agenda items.
Yeah, I would like an essay on the campus capacities.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else? I'd like to make a request that we... There's been a movement in a lot of other districts on a resolution to protect schools against the vouchers, and so I'd like for us to consider putting together a resolution. I mean, we're a public school with public funds, and that's being targeted, so I'd like for us to at least consider putting a resolution together stating that we are against a voucher program that would defund schools.
May 16 is the next meeting?
Yes. Next meeting's May 16, yes.
Okay.
All right.
And then we go into...
All right. I'm 13 adjourned.
Do we have a motion? Yeah, after the next...